...meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. Thank you. We will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Rhonda Morningstar Pope, Chairwoman of the Buena Vista Rancheria of the Miwok Indians of California.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Morningstar Pope, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and your leadership in the community. Thank you. The council did meet in closed session this evening to the items listed on the closed session agenda, and I would like to have the city attorney please provide a report on closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the council met in closed session on the four items listed on the agenda. In all cases, direction was provided to staff. No reportable action was taken.
Right. Next is Part One, Items by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda. And on this, we will have requests to speak. As noted in our agenda, we are prohibited by law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item One, but provide an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to speak, the council, on this or any other item this evening, to please fill out a request to speak card and return it to the clerk. And the clerk is standing right there, and she can show you what the request to speak card looks like. And there is a timer in front of the clerk to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. And also in front of the clerk is a flip chart which indicates the agenda item to the council that the council is currently considering. And once the staff report has been read and the council questions and public testimony have begun, we do not accept any other further speaking request on that particular agenda item. If you are addressing a specific agenda item, please turn in your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular agenda item. On that card, please note the agenda item which you'd like to speak. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by a code of conduct posted by the request to speak cards and on the podium, and not to speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the hearing. So at this time, do we have any requests to speak? I don't have any in hand. No. Okay. Giovanni Adalini.
Good evening. My name is Giovanni Adalini. I'm a Sacramento-area carpenter since 1997. I'm also a very active registered voter since 1992. I'm encouraged by the idea of adding more units of housing to West Sacramento at a time when homelessness is at an all-time high in our community. However, for the last few years, I've been having to drive over three hours round trip to be able to find work that pays a livable wage and health benefits for me and my family. I find it absolutely unacceptable that these developers are continually allowed to come into our community and exploit workers by paying them substandard wages with no health care. I would kindly ask that the council please consider adopting requirement that proposed developments pay area standard carpenter wages, health care coverage, and a commitment to hire local carpenters and tradesmen, including apprentices. I personally benefited from a state-approved apprenticeship program, and my quality of life is better because of it. Apprenticeship programs give those without the opportunity to attend college the ability to acquire skills that lead to good-paying jobs and a shot at the American dream. These developers will never do the right thing and pay area standard wages on their own. With your leadership, we can send a message to all developers that West Sacramento will not stand for the exploitation of carpenters, skilled tradesmen, and apprentices so that they can line their pockets with more profits. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Ruth Turn.
For the record, my name is Ruth Pagano Turn. Thank you for having an in-person council meeting. It has been too long. Today, I visited my mother's trailer in the Valhalla Mobile Home Park located at Lake Road and Industrial. You may know this area, but if you don't, I suggest you visit soon. There is a new super gas station called Maverick that had just been built at the entrance of Lake Road. This is the entrance of the KOA and the senior home, Valhalla Mobile Home Park. The roadway is a two-lane, small road with no sidewalks or clear signage or lighting. Thus far, it has no turnarounds for the big RVs and trucks that this gas station will attract. I urge the city to consider updating Lake Road to help prevent trucks from getting stuck in Valhalla, a private park, and add sidewalks so that the seniors, who many are disabled, will be able to walk safely to Mavericks or to anywhere else that they need food resources or fuel. On this note, I strongly believe the developers in the city have too many free passes, too many handouts, allowances. They are in too many pockets. Any new development should have to fix the roadways to a standard that they are not up to right now. The Southport Parkway is the greatest example and of the huge amount of development in the city without great improvements to our It looks like another huge massive warehouse is being built at Promenade and Southport Parkway. More semis, more potholes, and more accidents will surely follow. Many people have died or been seriously injured on Southport Parkway. Why is this okay? Why are we responding to sideshows without changing anything? If the city doesn't have the funds, then make the developers. This should not be that difficult. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alfred Melbourne.
My name is Alfred Melbourne. I'm a longtime resident of Broderick Bright, West Sacramento, and I love my community, and I will continue to work to do everything that I can to support the youth in my community. I want to say that upfront, Madam Mayor Martha Guerrero, city council members. As a First Nations representative of Turtle Island, a member of the Great Sioux Nation, I find the land acknowledgement full of hollow words. Although your intentions might be good, intentions aren't anything without actions behind them. Providing space for the First Nations on the city commissions would be essential to having fair and true representation in West Sacramento by the First Nations of this land and something to highlight throughout our state. Next time you guys have a land acknowledgement, I ask that you think about that. I don't find it a pleasure or the best use of my time having to come here and speak up for what I know is right. To be perfectly honest with you, I wouldn't even be standing here in front of you had not Karina Orozco, Dante Early, and Chris Ledezma, who is not here, tried to break up our historic community, Broderick and Bright. This brinksmanship and underhandedness has to stop. It has done nothing but create division across our city. Karina Orozco, Dante West, and Chris Ledezma thought that they knew what was best for our community. You were wrong. Once it was known to you all on May 18th, our community was in disagreement. You three should have stopped and reconsidered what you were doing, yet you didn't and continues to drag us down a path of waste and division. To this day, there still has not been an acknowledgement or an apology. I'm sure you all recognize the contributions that Broderick and Bright have made to the whole of West Sacramento now. Some of you might think that you did us a favor, but the only thing you really did was point out your lack of understanding of this community. You have a lot to learn. Fortunately, the judge was able to see right through your schemes and put a stop to it. All of this was the beginnings of a bad movie, and in it, you are the bad guys. Broderick and Bright is a marginalized community plagued by overpolicing and gang injunction that estimated our community of its future leaders.
You can wrap it up. Three minutes are up.
He has one minute.
Oh, he has one minute left. Oh, sorry.
Can we run that back a little bit?
Yeah, you can have the extra.
Gentrifying our neighborhood, if you look at the judge's order, there's nothing there to be proud of. We're extremely glad that Judge McAdams saw it fit to recognize our community of interest and support our claim. Now it's time to move forward. Some of you might want to take this personal, and you don't have the right to. As representatives and leaders of this community, you have to listen to what everyone has to say, even those who don't agree with you. One thing that you should know is that we are not afraid to stand up for what we believe in and what is right for our community. We need to support our youth from every corner of West Sacramento. We are in the midst of a global pandemic and climate crisis. This is no time for division. We are the only as strong as our weakest link, and it's upon us all to support and help one another. So from the Broderick and Bright Neighborhood Association, I want to thank all of us that came here tonight and are continuing to support and stand up, use our voice. A big round of applause to you. And I want to thank Mayor Martha Guerrero and city council for letting me speak.
The next speaker is Rhonda Pope Flores.
Thank you for this opportunity to let me be here today and speak. I will just ditto everything that Alfred said. It is unfortunate what happened. Many of our community members spoke up and were left unheard or ignored. I'm not sure what it was. But I want to thank you, Karina Orozco, and Dante Early, and Chris Ledezma. You council members did something that hasn't happened in a long time. You empowered us. Broderick and Bright Neighborhood Association is alive and well. We're not going anywhere. We are part of West Sacramento. We do not wish to be divided. We are part of West Sacramento. But the difference is that there have been resources that have not been allocated to our side for so long. We have been left out, and that has to stop, and we're going to keep speaking up. I want to also address your city attorney, Jeff Mitchell. At the hearing that I attended, it was very inappropriate for him to stereotype Broderick and Bright as poverty-stricken with prostitution and gangs. When the judge asked why he chose to divide Broderick and Bright, you owe us an apology for that. That is inappropriate. It is not acceptable. It should never be acceptable. I just want to say that you're going to see forthcoming, Broderick and Bright Neighborhood Association bringing things to you to address for our community. It's been too long. Every district should organize an association so that all of their interests are protected. And I thank you for infuriating us. I thank you for angering us and saddening us with this movement that you did. I'm not going to harp on it anymore. I won't bring it up anymore. But Broderick and Bright is a jewel to West Sacramento. It is something that you should be proud of and embrace, and you didn't, and it makes my heart sad. And I hope you examine your hearts, and I hope you look inside and you realize that your actions were wrong. And I hope that you reach out to the community members, and I do want to thank the two council members that didn't take an action on that. You're to be commended. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Garhala.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, especially right behind Chief Rhonda. It's actually an honor, also an honor to speak behind Alfred. And I ditto their words, and this is actually, for me, a celebratory moment because, one, we're coming back in person after such a long time, and look at the time that we're coming back at. You know, now we have district elections, I mean districts. And so it's really, really a very important time with regard to the attorney. As far as I'm concerned, he should really resign, and I call for his resignation or the ending of his contract because, as far as I'm concerned, that's discriminatory. And, you know, and so anyway, I remember back in 2016 when I ran against Ms. Orozco. She told one of our current commissioners, "Don't hang around her. She only represents a marginalized percentage of the community." And you probably just blurted it and don't remember saying it to our current commissioner, but it was said. And so that marginalized community, Judge Samuel, thought was historical and very important and did not deserve to be just thrown to the dogs as you felt didn't deserve any attention. And so I always, I need to apologize if my words are not graceful and eloquent and perfect. And, you know, sometimes words can appear harsh, and that's the way it is sometimes. It's reality. But, you know, sometimes if the hat fits, you know, you put it on, and that's the way it is. But, you know, life has growing pains, and that's the way it is. I really see that our city has gone through a lot of growing pains. I remember standing here and swearing to the day I die that I would see a new mayor, and I feel that I accomplished that. And so that's a major accomplishment for myself. And so I feel that now that we have District One and Two, I feel that now budget-wise, we can start budgeting our pool. We can start budgeting sidewalks, and that way we can budget our resources equally. There's no more reason where Southport has to have all the resources. Now we have districts, and now we can budget accordingly. And so I'm actually very, very happy. And I'm hoping that we can have a boxing program to keep our kids busy and other things to keep our kids busy. And so that's yellow, and so it's not red. Yes, it is. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Our next speaker is Jose Garcia.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words here. I represent the Bright area. I've been living there for about 43 years, so I'm just a longtime resident since I was seven years old, and I haven't moved anywhere else, just moved a couple streets from where I originally grew up. And what I've noticed is that, well, a couple things. I've been on vacation, so I've been riding around my bike and checking out, just going through my regular streets. I know every single crack. I know every single street in my neighborhood, starting from Sunset all the way to Toddhunter Avenue. And what I've noticed is I've been taking pictures and uploading them on the West Sacramento Connect, and then I check back every once in a while, see if there's any progress or anything. And a lot of the responses are that they've been repaired. And then I go drive by there again. I ride my bike through there again, and it's been a week since they said, "Oh, yeah, that's been repaired," and it hasn't been repaired. So that's one of the issues that I wanted to bring attention to is the, you know, the repairing of all the different potholes. And I know it's not just that side of town. I know it's everywhere in West Sacramento, and I'm sure you guys have a plan to work on it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that if it's stated that it's been worked on, that it's been done, then it should be truthful that it's been done. The other issue that I want to bring up is a longtime issue that deals with some of the things that Maria mentioned, which is equal resource distribution. I've been in that area, like I said, 43 years, and it was probably about 20 years ago that there was a grant that allowed for some money being used to repair and to install sidewalks in really old neighborhood that had not been really, didn't have sidewalks. Almost every single part of West Sacramento has sidewalks for people to walk safely on. And I'm watching my kids grow up, and my oldest one is now 19 years of age, and she hasn't seen a sidewalk in that area for people to, you know, for walking to the park, riding their bike. We have to ride on the street every single time, and it's kind of sad to see other areas that, you know, you ride around and there's sidewalks. They can actually get on the sidewalk, get away from the cars and so forth. So I just wanted to see if there's any, you know, any money, you know, just general funds to repair streets and to actually put sidewalks in some of these streets that are long, that have, I think, long been abandoned. So that's all I got to say. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Maria Garcia.
Hola, buenas tardes. Gracias por la oportunidad de hablar. Mi nombre es Maria Garcia. Yo les he pedido varias veces ya que necesite una persona que me traduzca. Es la oportunidad para mí y para mi comunidad hispana hacernos escuchar. Hay muchas de las personas que están atrás de mí, varias familias, bastantes familias que quieren mirar el progreso de nuestra ciudad. West Sacramento necesita nuestras banquetas, y le hago eco a la señora María, Alfredo, a Rhonda, y a todas las personas que estamos en Broderick and Bright Neighborhood Association. Nos hemos asociado por esa razón para poder mirar el cambio en West Sacramento. Hemos mirado cómo nos han querido separar, y hemos estado aquí parados hablando, y seguiremos aquí hablando hasta que nos escuchen. No solamente soy yo. Somos muchas personas en la comunidad que quieren hacerse escuchar. Muchas personas que han pasado por mucha discriminación porque no podemos hacernos escuchar en nuestra voz. Nadie nos puede traducir, y por esa razón estoy aquí, representando a cada una de esas familias que no están aquí presentes porque no entienden lo que se les dice. Lo mismo que ahorita les está pasando ustedes, a varios de ustedes que no entienden lo que les estoy hablando. Así, igualmente, así nos sentimos nosotros. Queremos la representación de alguien que nos pueda traducir, y queremos ver nuestra ciudad para, con el bienestar para nuestros hijos. Queremos ver la alberca. Queremos ver lo que son las banquetas para nuestra ciudad. Queremos ver varios cambios. Hemos visto cómo han hecho de edificios, cómo están haciendo construcciones nuevas, pero se están olvidando a nuestros hijos. Nuestros hijos que están metiéndose más en problemas y que al final de cuentas van a terminar en las áreas más mejores que se miran en West Sacramento robando o haciendo daños a otras personas. Y eso no lo queremos. Nuestros hijos no son ladrones. Nuestros hijos son ciudadanos como nosotros. Gracias por su atención, y le hago eco a todas las personas que hablaron anterior de mí. Gracias.
We have no additional speakers on non-agenda items. Thank you, madam clerk. Next, we'll move on to presentations. And Agenda Item Two, under fire, we received a notice that the presentation by Yola County on the Health Yolo Together Program will be in August, so that will not be presented tonight. We'll move on to Item Three, the City Manager's Office, a presentation regarding the Sacramento Yola Mosquito and Vector Control District. And I believe, who will be providing that presentation? Okay, please come up and provide the presentation.
In the meantime, thank you so much for having me. My name is Luz Maria Robles. I am the Public Information Officer for the Sacramento Yola Mosquito and Vector Control District, and I'm happy to be here to talk to you guys about how we can work together to control mosquitoes. So with that, I will get started with my presentation. So the purpose of the presentation tonight is, first of all, talking about how we, as an agency and as a district, protect public health by controlling mosquitoes that can obviously transmit a lot of diseases. We operate under the California Health and Safety Code, and we do our due diligence to make sure that we reduce mosquito populations to levels that are not posing a threat. So a lot of people don't know that different mosquitoes come from different mosquito-breeding sources. Within our area, we have about 23 different species of mosquitoes that come out at different times of the year. Obviously, Yola County has a lot of agricultural areas. We have also a lot of urban areas. But even sources such as maybe a bucket, or a wheelbarrow, or a dog dish, anything that can hold water for more than a few days can and will become a mosquito-breeding source. We're mainly concerned about the backyard sources because, obviously, we know where the rivers are, where the creeks, where the stream is man-made lakes, but we obviously can't be in everybody's backyard. So we really depend on people doing their part to dump out that stagnant water to make sure that they're doing their due diligence to not breed mosquitoes in their own homes because, obviously, then they will be the ones that are bitten and they could potentially become very ill. Our district uses what we call an integrated pest management approach to control mosquitoes. So the first line of defense is public information and education, which is what I'm doing here. I speak to a lot of community groups. I go to neighborhood associations. I speak at schools. I'm not sure if you guys have seen commercials that say, like, "Fight the Bite, Drain Water, Worry Repellent." That's all coming from our district. We also have a very extensive surveillance and laboratory program that tracks where and how West Nile virus activity might be moving. They set out mosquito traps to collect them. We test those mosquitoes, and then that's how we're able to tell where we're detecting virus activity. So by virus, meaning West Nile virus that could happen either in birds or mosquitoes. We also have a biological control program. That's basically our fisheries. There's these tiny fish called mosquito fish, little mosquito fish that actually eat mosquitoes that are developing in the water. A lot of people don't know, too, that mosquitoes actually start their life in water, so before they actually fly around, they go through three different stages in the water. So dumping out that stagnant water will go a long way in not breeding mosquitoes. So the fish, if you have a pond, a fountain, a horse trough, we put them in the man-made lakes, and that's one of our free services that we offer. So if you have a pond or fountain, we would come out and deliver these free mosquito fish to your home. We also have an ecological management department, so basically working with landowners that have large areas of land to make sure that they're not breeding mosquitoes on their property. And then lastly, our chemical control, that's basically our, like, our boots on the ground, our field technicians that are going out to do, to provide free service inspections to people. So if you're having mosquito issues around your home, don't know where mosquitoes might be coming from, you can call us. We'll come out to do a free inspection around your yard. We'll give you recommendations. If we find mosquitoes flying around, we'll actually do a treatment for you, and that's all part of our free services that we offer. West Nile virus activity in California, so every year can be a little bit different. West Nile virus is a disease that is transmitted to us by mosquitoes. Last year, there was a total of 128 human cases, including nine deaths, but the CDC estimates that for every reported case, there's many more that go underreported. So, you know, you can see that last year's numbers, 128, relatively low in comparison to other numbers. This year seems to be even lower, but as I said, there's been other years when the numbers have climbed up to 800 or 500. So every year can be a little bit different. You're in luck, though, because here in West Sacramento, last year, we did not detect any West Nile virus activity in either birds or mosquitoes. So we track all year round, especially during the hot summer months of, like, May through October, but again, we did not detect any West Nile virus activity in West Sacramento. Our newest and biggest concern that we have now is the invasive mosquitoes. I know that to the general public, a mosquito is a mosquito, but actually mosquitoes can behave very differently, and this new invasive mosquito is different than our traditional or normal mosquitoes. So this is an aggressive, day-biting mosquito, very small, and make them bite all day long where our normal mosquitoes would bite primarily at dawn and dusk. This actually, this mosquito can actually breed indoors and outdoors, and what makes this mosquito so difficult to control is the fact that it lays its eggs along the edges of containers. Even if the containers are dry, they lay their eggs and then just kind of wait until those containers are filled with water. So, and their eggs- So, and their eggs can actually be viable for more than six months. So, you know, once we detect these mosquitoes in any given area, they're very difficult to control. And the reason we're so concerned is because these specific species of mosquitoes can transmit new debilitating diseases such as Zika, Dengue, or Chikungunya. And of course, you know, we see these types of diseases every year, but for the most part, they're all travel-related cases. But now that these mosquitoes are here, the risk for local exposure is far greater. Some of the areas where we have detected these mosquitoes so far, we first detected them in the city of Citrus Heights in 2019, and then ever since then, they have been slowly spreading. Our biggest infestation in Yola County is actually in the city of Winters. And, you know, we're actively trying to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to control these mosquitoes. We have a very active surveillance program. And again, we are looking for where these mosquitoes could be developing and trying to educate residents on what they can do about them. Again, these mosquitoes can breed in as little as a teaspoon of water, so they don't need very much water to breed. They like to breed in small containers. They can breed in cryptic sources. They can even breed like in plant saucers. If you have a lucky bamboo plant inside your house, which would make it an unlucky bamboo, then, you know, they can definitely breed in any of those areas. And this is our newest challenge to date. And again, they're here, so I honestly, it's sad to say that they're here to stay. Just yesterday, they were detected for the first time in Placer County, but they're already very widely distributed throughout both Sacramento and Yola County. So what do we do whenever we have one of these detections? We do a lot of door-to-door in those specific neighborhoods. We go out, we try and do education to the residents, we try to do home inspections, we do treatments if necessary. We send out postcards. We set, you know, we do like a big public information outreach campaign because again, our mission is to make sure that we're protecting the health of the residents that we serve. And of course, you know, as you know, mosquitoes can be much more than a nuisance. So moving forward, we're exploring different ways of controlling these invasive mosquitoes. We're going to continue with our surveillance and outreach. We're also doing more outreach opportunities. Last month, we were here at one of your city-sponsored events, Rhythm by the River. We're always looking to partner ways to get information out in your city newsletters. You know, if you guys have the different districts, I'm happy to provide mosquito prevention tips. We have free mosquito repellent wipes available for any neighborhood association, for any your National Night Out events, any kind of outdoor evening event, movies in the park, concert. Oh, there you go, yay! So awesome, thank you. We're happy to provide those free of charge and are always looking to collaborate with you guys. So with that, I'll take any questions, or if not, then I'm...
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Luz Maria Robles. I'll open it up for questions among the council. Are there any questions? Yes. I'll remember early.
So you mentioned that you guys do the outreach and you do the flyers. Have you partnered with us regarding putting inserts in like our water bill or things like that?
We have not, because I mean, primarily, we do those types of partnerships in communities where we have been finding these invasive mosquitoes. And to date, West Sacramento is not an area that's considered, you know, we have not detected them here yet. But, you know, hoping not to, but if so, that would be a great outreach element.
Last question. How, outside of if you're watching our meeting or you've come and attended, how would your average West Sacramento resident know about some of the things that you just listed as far as the free services, coming out and checking, even if maybe as a whole, it's not a priority, but we might have some small pockets?
So I mean, the basic thing that we say is if you notice that there's a lot of mosquitoes around you, you don't know where they're coming from, you could always call our district. And if you don't know our number, just Google "in Sacramento mosquitoes," or "Controlling mosquitoes in my yard," and we pop right up. So, you know, you could just give us a call, and we would come out and do that free inspection for you. So, you know, we're a local government agency, and people pay a small fee when they pay for their property taxes. That's how we're funded, so that's why our services are free, you know, because every time you pay for your, on your tax bill, about twelve dollars from every home goes to fund our district.
Thank you. I remember my mother always putting like Avon Skin So Soft on us, right, to avoid the mosquitoes and stuff. Will you be going out to our schools, to Washington Unified School District, to make a presentation out there?
I'm happy to always come out and do presentations once they're requested from me. So yeah, if that's a desire, we offer individual presentations, we do whole school assemblies. So yes, if somebody would like or is interested in one, I'm happy to be able to do that.
You have the Broderick Bright Association. You said you go out to...
Neighborhood associations, yep, that's what I was going to say. We offer those wipes. I'm happy to come and do an individual presentation to, you know, different organizations. Or if there's a big National Night Out event that's coming up, you know, we're happy to provide wipes, materials. You have a bunch of like little swag that we're happy to get up.
Thank you.
Thank you again. I've seen you present before at this council and on multiple occasions elsewhere, Earth Day and whatnot, and it's always a fantastic presentation, very informative and very fast.
Yeah, I like it.
Just like Councilmember Alcala mentioned, school presentations, I mean, those children are vehicles for this information into their household in like culturally appropriate ways. So I think that's a fantastic idea. And yeah, every year, I know County Supervisor Viegas always takes a ton of these, so they are fantastic, especially during, you know, playing fields at night when the kids are all out there and the parents are waiting and getting eaten alive. So anyhow, thank you so much for the fantastic presentation. I know that, you know, many people don't even think about the little hot, I mean, they're thinking hot tubs and pools and other big standing ponds of water, whatnot, but not necessarily that teaspoon size that you'd referenced. You know, and I know that it's labor-intensive and there's all these rules with respect to COVID, but if we can't get into the schools with a physical presentation or an assembly, I mean, a video, you'd be fantastic for a video.
We do have virtual assemblies, so...
Yeah, awesome.
And one thing too, with the wipes, we do offer them too, especially for like organizations that help the homeless. I know that there's a lot of homeless along the river, so we do provide that repellent for those organizations as well.
No. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, don't...
I'm sorry?
I still have questions.
Oh.
So, and we... And you have a question for our city attorney. Is this special presentation for public comment as well, that we have a section for public comment?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. So I'll ask the clerk before we're done with this section of, you know, because we'll be going into public comment if there are any requests to speak. No, okay. So then, I do have a question, you know, piggybacking a little bit on Councilmember Early's question. I think for people to be aware of what, you know, could be done for, you know, just looking at what's around their home, even though we don't have, you know, just mosquitoes that we're finding, and wanted to ask a little bit about that as well, could we put something in the utility bills, letting them know that, you know, they can have a home inspection at some point? And then, how do you detect? Where are the locations for those detection mechanisms? I think there are little things that I see hanging on the trees and things like that.
So we definitely can, I'm happy to work with you to get the information in your city newsletters or in your bill inserts.
Okay.
And then regarding the surveillance, I think the ones that you're referring to in the trees, that's like the Department of Agriculture, and I think that's for something else. For us, part of our surveillance, we do set out traps, but they would be like in the bushes or in people's homes. So what we do is our laboratory, they set out different traps, and different traps attract different types of mosquitoes. So the ones that would attract, the ones that are, that we're concerned about for West Nile virus, they're either, they're two different types of traps. So we put them like in parks or in areas in neighborhoods where we, you know, where we think that we might collect mosquitoes or in like ag areas. Then we, once those traps are set, we collect the traps, and then we count and sort the mosquitoes, and then we test them for West Nile virus. If they test positive, then we know where we collect those mosquitoes from, and then we set a one-mile radius of where those traps were first set, and we set more traps, and then we collect those mosquitoes. So low and behold, you know, usually that's how we track where any hot spots would be developing, but it's all based on the surveillance work done by our laboratory.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Since there's no public comment request, I'm going to wrap it up. Thank you so much. I appreciate your presentation, very informative.
Thank you.
Right. Next is going to be our consent agenda, and we have Items Four through Seventeen. Are there any requests to remove any item?
Madam Mayor, on this one, we would advise Councilmember Alcala to recuse on Item Nine. She's aware of this, so it would need to be taken up separately.
It will be taken separately? And we won't be discussing Item Nine at this time if there are any questions unless Councilmember Alcala needs to leave the chamber. So we just wanted to inform my colleagues about that. Any other items to remove?
I'm sorry, counsel, but can you speak into your microphones when you speak?
You know, maybe, it's just hard.
The recording and the live stream can't pick you up unless you do.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll speak a little louder. How was that? All right, sounds good. Okay, Item Ten, and I would like to pull Item Seven and Fourteen. So we'll start with Item Seven, and that is Ms. Stephanie Chan, the Senior Transportation Planner, who's listed on this item. I don't know if she can answer some questions that I have. First off, I want to say it is real exciting to see the plug-in electrical vehicle supplies being out there. Looking forward to the implementation of this, and I wanted to get a sense of the timeline for installation and when people can use them, and how many over the course of, what period of time?
Of course. So as you may have noticed in the staff report, we are installing a total of ten L2 single ports, twenty-six L2 dual ports. So that's a total of, the dual ports are two stalls and a single port, there are one stall, so, and then like the DCFC are single stalls, and we're installing twelve of them. That's just different. I'm sorry, you might look a little confused. Those are just different types of charger, charging type. But in terms of your question regarding when we plan to construct and install them, this current contract request is for the purchase of the equipment. In regards to the installation, we're still working through the design and the permitting phase with the city. So I hope to start the construction phase for these sites in early 2023.
Looking forward to that. And another question I have is, the goal is to incentivize our commuters so that they can purchase electrical vehicles, reduce the gas emissions. And will we be taking a look at some kind of program to announce that these are up and running and just kind of push the outreach?
Yes, yes. So we're trying to move through that as well. As you may have noticed, the current EV chargers we have at the city, so we have a couple out here in front of City Hall and a couple at the Bridge District. We currently have, those chargers are free for use right now. We are developing policy internally before we will present that to the council for consideration. And then as we move forward with the installation, we'll conduct a larger outreach event to let people know that they can utilize these chargers across the city.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Remember, Early.
Hi, thank you. So I unfortunately do not have an electrical vehicle, but I would love one, so I'll put that out there. But I have heard, because I spend quite a bit of time in the Bridge District, from folks who do, and they have said they greatly appreciate the fact that they could charge their cars for free, but that it's really slow.
So...
So I guess I was going to ask about speed of the ones that you're going to be installing.
Yes, so that's why I mentioned the different types of chargers we're installing. So the L2 chargers, you can get a full charge typically within four hours if you're empty. And then the DCFCs are our fast chargers, which you can, we're ideally putting them at sites where we're supporting medium-sized fleet vehicles. And so you'll see like at the corp yard and a couple other sites in the city, but those can charge vehicles in, I believe, thirty minutes.
So we will be installing some that maybe charge at the same rate or speed as the Bridge District, and then in some of our more, bigger impacted or bigger vehicle areas, we're going to have some faster ones put in. And currently, they will be free to charge until you come back, potentially with a fee structure.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Chan.
Thank you.
Item Number Ten, Mayor Pemmarosco.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to review the item related to the Downtown Streets Team contract. Several years ago, I think it was probably in the late 2017, we brought this as a pilot, and now it is a full-fledged, pretty instituted program. And earlier today, when we did the ribbon cutting for the permanent supportive housing development over at 1801 West Capital, I know the mayor referenced Downtown Streets Team as a tool that has been effective in reducing the impacts and incidences of homelessness in our community. I want to commend staff, Raul Huerta, you've been working on this since its inception, as well as Mark Sawyer, who visited the program in Sacramento that we helped establish in order to really move forward on a program here in West Sacramento. For those who are unfamiliar with the program, just briefly, you know, we do focus specifically on homeless individuals who are in West Sacramento because they're our tax dollars that we're focusing on trying to reduce the impacts in Sacramento, West Sacramento itself, and with the proximity to Sacramento, sometimes that can be tricky, which is why we have that criteria. But as I sit on the 24th Century Commission on Homelessness, I will tell you that West Sacramento is the envy of our region when it comes to the multiple approaches that we have taken in order to, again, address this very, very important issue. So less a question, but more of a thanks. Thanks to our staff. Thanks to county for providing this additional ARP funding for us to fund two additional one-year options after the initial year investment. We've seen, as colleagues on the council, this program expand from, again, that one-year pilot with just a few members to a very visible program and presence on our streets, beautifying our streets, and many times to the benefit of our... I just saw a fist pump back there. We got a DST green shirt member back there, fantastic. And for those who aren't familiar, you see a lot of yellow shirts out there. Yellow shirts are the folks that are joining us, they're going out there, and they're getting their feet wet to try to, you know, pick up trash, needles, things at our park. Steph and Heather, I see you back there too. Folks that, you know, they're helping us. We've heard from police departments saying, our chief stranger's here in the second row, saying what a fantastic presence this organization has been. It's fantastic for our S as a city because it beautifies our streets, but it's also fantastic for the members who are now very visible, very appreciated. And for those of you who see them on the street, make sure you honk at them. They know it's because it's a honk of approval. And to see you out there making that effort. The case management, employment services, and work readiness training has helped. I learned in one of our city council newsletters this year that we, the city of West Sacramento, have hired two of our Downtown Streets Team graduates, TJ and Robert Nagel. And as a personal note, back in 2018, when we were doing our caravan for National Night Out, I bumped into Nagel, and he had told me at that time he was about seventy-two, seventy-six days sober. This is a man that now works for the corp yard for the city of West Sacramento. I got to tell you, we are keeping up the momentum in our city, working together with programs like this, using our tax dollars effectively to really impact the complexion of our city when it comes to homelessness. So kudos to my colleagues, kudos to our staff, kudos to the Downtown Streets Team over there in the back row, and thanks again to the county for their support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pemmarosco. And you can sit down. I just also want to make some comments. I don't have any questions. First off, I just also want to reiterate what Mayor Pemmarosco has said about the success of the Downtown Streets Team and the effectiveness it has had. First, starting off with the utilization of Measure E funding, which is our sales tax revenue, which includes other programs, but to address and ameliorate the homeless situation, Downtown Streets Team combined, both looking at getting folks housed, but also cleaning the streets. And that is what the Department of Public Works was working on. And, you know, the program is not just finding people to get them employed, but it also includes referring them for substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment. It provides them, you know, what people were saying is, you know, a voucher, you know, for gas or something, but I think it provided more than that. It provided a door, a door to recovery, to healing. It provided a door, a door to recovery, to healing, and folks in the community that have been effectively reaching out over the years prior to Downtown Streets Team, such as St. Mensa de Paul, Mercy Coalition, they've been able to identify those that could participate in Downtown Streets Team, but they have a resource at this time. And so the linkage to individuals who, you know, sometimes it's really hard to just walk into a home and say, I'm housed, and, you know, feel like that moment is like the moment of recovery. It doesn't work that way. It takes a long period of time for individuals who have been unhoused, they have trauma, they have a level of mistrust in government, and this was a contract out to an organization, not, not government doing this, but a contract out to an organization that had best practices and applied this and found it to be effective. So moving forward, seeing that we could continue to use Measure E, but, or taking advantage of an opportunity that, under, you know, the federal administration, using the American Rescue Plan and using that funding to extend the period of time, not looking at it as a year-by-year basis, wondering if we're going to go from one year to the next to fund this. And so establishing a more, you know, just a period of time so that they can have some consistency. And now we could see them in Project Home Key at the roadway end planting or establishing a little farm. So they're, they're going to learn how to grow their own vegetables, and they're teaching others there how to do that, fruits and vegetables, and it's real exciting to see that. And, and I've seen in, you know, have toured the Downtown Streets Team program and just seeing how people have felt there is a family there that they can go to, a support system that understands and meets them where they're at. And so looking forward, you know, to seeing how this particular program has helped branched out individuals that are now at 1801 West Capital Avenue, our Mercy Housing Program, is there are former participants of the Downtown Streets Team which are now housed. So there are success stories, and we're going to continue that trend here because that's how West Sacramento rocks. We are moving forward together with the various partnerships, not only with the police department, Parks and Rec, and Department of Public Works, various members of the administration who've participated, and council members here, all of us in support. So with that, I just want to thank and commend everyone who's helped make this a reality and looking forward to moving, moving on and making this successful. Next item is.
We do have a public comment on this item, Mayor?
Oh, sure, I will bring up the public comments right, right after we bring up each agenda item, and then, you know, we have an agenda item. I'm going to go to 14, and then I'm going to bring up public comment for all the consented items.
Okay, thank you.
Is number 14, and Tracy Michael. Thank you. I don't have any questions, Tracy, but I just want to say, for all the years of, of hard work, I don't know if you want to say anything, because I think you, I, I would like to share this opportunity on the mic, so you can share all the hard work you've put into this, and commend you for just, you know, getting to the point where we are at now.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. It has been, gosh, probably five years in the making, and I have to say that this effort really launched because of our Flood Division. It's a, an interdepartmental team that's been working in this area, it's a multi-benefit project, it's a really great example of what happens when you can, you can look at multi-benefit projects. So in this case, it's providing flood protection, it's related to a flood protection project, but also recreation, and also responding directly to the feedback that the community provided us about improved access to nature, passive recreation and the riverfront. So it's been a long time in the making, and, and this is still just the first phase of improvements, there'll be many more to come, but we are really excited to launch this phase and to be bringing some really exciting public improvements and some cleanup of the Bees Lakes area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next, I'll open it up, I'll open up items four through 17 for our consent agenda item, if anybody would like to speak on any of these items.
Tony Tuttle for item 10.
My name is Tony Tuthill, my friends call me TJ. I'm, I am also part of the Downtown Street Team, I'm a green shirt. But what I wanted to bring up more of attention is, is that I'm one of the homeless people out there that have been homeless for 30 years. Although there has been great things that have, you know, where my team has made it to where we have changed some of the levels of perception of homeless, you know, but there's a lot of people out there that still aren't being reached because in one form or another, whether it's because of COVID or because things that, you know, have now not been available. But what I've noticed is that there needs to be more housing, more apartments than just 1801, because there's a lot more individuals out there. I'm one of the people that is in Rimkey, and I also, you know, started, you know, suggested for the garden so that, you know, people can learn, you know, because that can show a lot of different trades, you know, if you learn how to garden, because from landscaping on up. But I'm, I live on Social Security, and there's only one place that besides 1801 here in West Sacramento that bases the rent on your income, you know, where it's like a third instead. And there are people out there like me that haven't been on paper known, you know, they, when you go and apply to apartment, you, you don't get, you know, you get that letter of that, thank you for applying, but you, you're not eligible because we can't, we don't know, you know, you don't have any information or no banking or anything like that. So I, what I'm trying to urge is that to develop more apartments for people, whether if they have the income to supply or, or, because if they haven't lived, you know, in the regular mainstream world, then there's no information on, you know. So people, when they try to, you know, look for your credit line or what, what, you know, or proof of your income, because that's three times their rent, well, I definitely don't make three times the rent, you know. So I just, I think that there should be more looked into about making more apartment complexes that could fit and common, you know, accommodate people that have, you know, worked really hard to change their, you know, and give themselves a better way of living. Otherwise, you know, when everything comes to an end, and those who are still in, in the motels and stuff, then they're going to just be right back out to the river if there's no option or no place that, you know, besides just a couple places, and the other places, they have like a year and a half, two years on waiting list. So with that said, that's all I wanted to say, and I just wanted to let you guys know that this is a face of a person who was homeless for 30 years.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will remove item number nine, and I'll accept a motion without item number nine.
So move.
Second. Councilmember Early moved, councilmember Alcala seconded. Madame Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Okay, next is item number nine, I'll have a motion to approve item number nine.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, councilmember Alcala, you should actually step out. Thank you.
Second. Okay, um, Mayor Protemor. Do we need to do it again? That's okay, Mayor Protemorosco, move. Councilmember Early seconded.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Okay, this item is approved. Next on our public hearing time set agenda is item 18, Finance Public Hearing and Consideration of Resolution 22-99 Certifying Inclusion of Delinquent Charges and Penalties for Water, Sewer, and Refuge Services on the Secure Tax Role in the Same Manner as the General Taxes and Directing That a Lean Also Be Placed on the Subject Properties. I think it would be Ms. Becky Robertson, our finance manager, will please present? Thank you.
All right, so good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. So every year, the city conducts a public hearing in order to place the delinquent water, sewer, and refuge charges on the property tax role, and at the same time, we request authorization to also put liens on the delinquent properties. So towards the end of each fiscal year, we prepare a list of unpaid utility service charges on accounts where they've been delinquent for more than 60 days. We then use that list to do outreach and let all, let the customers know of the delinquent amounts and encourage them to pay, and then, of course, let them know if they have any questions to reach out to the city. So as of today, the delinquent amount of the utility service charges has reduced to This is actually less than we've seen in previous years. A big reason for that is the waiving of the late fees and penalties dating back to April of 2020, which became effective with the emergency proclamation. City staff will continue to take payments all the way up until July 29th to allow us to have a few days to record the final payments and then pull together the list in order to submit it to the county for the 2223 tax rule, which is due to them no later than April or August 10th of every year. Uh, so at this time, I would love to answer any questions that you may have and then ask for you to please open the public hearing.
Thank you. And first, I'll ask among our city council members, Mayor Protemorosco has a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to the delinquent late charges, when will they be imposed? And if they are not, if these fees are not paid by, say, the August 10th date, will they be imposed or will they continue to be waived?
So, no, the, the late fees and penalties is tied to the emergency proclamation, so they, we will not continue to not collect them until that is removed. Um, and so if the customer does not pay the delinquent fees by the, the July 29th deadline, they will be placed on the property tax role, and at which point, if they were to not pay the property tax role, then the county could assess late fees and penalties.
And they've been, and we've been in communication with all the property owners?
Yes, so multiple notices are sent out each month with their regular bills in addition to a, a separate letter that was sent over a month ago notifying them, and then we've been in coordination with them as they call with any questions.
Can they do payment plans if?
Yeah, it, um, we absolutely are willing to work out payment plans with customers. We do typically extend it up to six months to, for a payment plan.
Thank you.
Just want councilmember Alcala?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted the public to know that no services are going to be cut off if these bills are not paid. I just think it's important for folks to know that. Thank you.
Councilmember Early?
This is probably a quick and easy question. So 60 days, you're, you're delinquent and you get a late fee on top of whatever you haven't paid. Yes?
So right now, since we're not assessing any late fees, there's no late fees or penalties on these delinquent amounts at all with the city.
Okay.
And these are charges that have been accumulated over the last year, but at which point, no late fees or penalties have, have been assessed because of the emergency proclamation.
Thank you.
And I see on page one on, on the first item, $58,000, you said for the last year?
So, oh, the $58,000 for the high? Or what, I'm sorry.
Let's just.
Oh, page one.
Sorry, page one of 17 of the amount delinquent?
Oh. Yes, that, um, that is a, a hotel.
Oh, that's a hotel.
Yes. So this is a list of both commercial and residential.
I see. All right, and this time I will open up, open it up for a public comment, questions among the council members. Madame Clerk, are there any requests to speak? No, close the public comment, bring it back. And we conducted the public hearing, I don't think there's any other action item that we need to take this time?
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution, I'll accept a motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Second. We have councilmember Alcala who moved, Mayor Protemorosco is seconded, please call the roll, madam clerk.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next is item 19, Under Finance, is a public hearing and consideration of Resolution 22-88, Confirming the Diagram and Assessment and Ordering Improvements, Maintenance to Be Made for the Landscaping and Lighting District Number One. Mr. Mark Rodaville, our finance analyst, please present. Did I pronounce that correct?
Rodaville, yeah. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a routine item, we have been doing it for over the last 30 years. This item is for the Landscape and Lighting District. We are not imposing any increases to this assessment. This assessment was adopted prior to the 218 process, but this is a requirement from the county that we come before you to adopt the resolution of approving the map and the assessment so it can be placed on the tax role. Tonight, we are asking to hold a public hearing and after the public hearing to adopt the resolution confirming diagram and assessment and ordering improvements to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, I'll accept any questions among the council members on this item? No questions, I'll open it up for public comment. Madame Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, close it, and I'll accept a motion to move this item.
So move.
Mayor Rosco moved.
Seconded.
Councilmember Early seconded, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Next item is item 20, Under Finance, is a public hearing and consideration of Resolution 22-89 Confirming the Diagram and Assessment and Ordering Improvements to Be Made on the Storm Dream Maintenance District Number One, Rayleigh's Landing. And we have Mark Rodaville again, our finance analyst.
So this is very similar to what was just presented, the item previously. So this is for the Storm Dream Maintenance District. We're not imposing any increases to this assessment district. This assessment was also adopted prior to the 218 process, but this is a requirement from the county that we may, that we come before you to adopt the resolution of approving the map and the assessment so it can be placed on the tax role. Tonight, we're asking to hold a public hearing and after the public hearing to adopt the resolution confirming diagram and assessment and ordering the improvements to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions among the council members? No? Open it up for public comment. Madame Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no con, uh, request for this item.
Thank you, close it and bring it back to the council members for motion approved.
So move.
Second.
Member Early moved and councilmember Alcala seconded. Madame Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, this item is approved, thank you, Mark. The next item is item 22, and. 21, Public Hearing and Consideration of Resolution Dash 22-20 Certifying the List of Weed Abatement Charges Directing That a Lean Be Placed on the Subject Properties and Requesting Inclusion of These Charges on the Secure Tax Role in Order That They May Be Collected in the Same Manner as General Taxes. Our fire marshal, Brian Johnson, here to present.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to essentially put a close to our 2022 weed abatement program. Back in April, when council kicked it off, approved the kickoff, we notified 1,000 property owners of their responsibility to mitigate weeds on their property, and I'm happy to say, three months later, only 13 of those almost 1,000 properties had to be forcibly baited by the city's contractor. So thank you to the 900-plus, you know, property owners in the city that have managed their responsibility. And with that, those 13 properties on this agenda item is a resolution to adopt an exhibit that lists those, and I want to address the memo that you received and apologize for the last-minute amendment, but yesterday afternoon, we were notified by the contractor that there was a discrepancy. So in that memo, it removes one of those properties and reduces the total taxing amount. So I respectfully request, recommend that that taken to account prior to approval. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. So we have an errata memo that comes with this?
I apologize, it was emailed to you. And I did not make hard copies.
And, um, thank you. All right, we will then have to approve the errata memo when we have a motion. And any questions among the members? Need, open it up for public comment, any requests to speak?
We have no requests on this item.
Thank you, madam clerk, and then close it, and I'll accept a motion to.
So move. Move the record.
Sorry?
That I've moved, uh, well, I'll second the recommended action, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Protemorosco seconded.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Councilmember Alcala.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is item 22, Under Parks and Recreation, is a public hearing and consideration of Resolution 22-79 Updating the City of West Sacramento Book of Fees for City Preschool. And Ms. Connie Leek, our Recreation Manager, please present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Connie Leek, Recreation Manager with the Parks and Recreation Department. The book of fees associated with city preschool programs and Discovery Preschool was last updated in 2017 in order to align with then-current mark, oh, I'm sorry. This item pertains to updating the book of fees. This item pertains to updating the Book of Fees for City Preschools. The Book of Fees associated with City Preschool Programs and Discovery Preschool was last updated in 2017 in order to align with then-current market rates and to partially offset increased staff costs, utility costs, and janitorial rates. Since 2017, all of those costs have continued to increase for Discovery Preschool, triggering the need to reevaluate, reevaluate the fees charged for the program. Staff is requesting that city council conduct a public hearing, which is required for fee updates, and adopt Resolution 22-79, which updates the Book of Fees for City Preschools to remove learning ladder preschool fees and apply a very modest fee increase to Discovery Preschool. The proposed fee update also includes a provision that allows the city manager or the city manager's designee the ability to make minor fee adjustments annually, which will help improve cost recovery over time, but avoid significant increases to our families post-COVID. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions among the council members?
I do. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Hi, Connie.
Hi. Commissioner.
Yeah. With, with learning ladders closing, has there been any increase to the participation rate in Discovery Preschool?
No, I would say no. COVID has been an interesting time. So what we've seen happen through these few years of COVID is a little less attendance than we would normally have, but we're on an upshoot and that is starting to turn around.
And for those families who might not be able to afford traditional childcare, do we have any type of supports in place that would assist such as like financial or maybe a sliding scale fee structure?
We don't have a sliding structure at this point, but I will say, of course, that we take subsidy and that when families qualify for subsidy, Discovery certainly works with whatever programs they're on. But I would say that we've done a market rate survey and that we're on the very low end and that this, this Discovery Preschool Program is at a very reasonable rate. And in fact, the parents have been notified of this proposal for this very modest rate increase. And really, their feedback has been that they really value the program and that they don't think this fee is a very large increase. And what it comes to, if they attend two days a week of preschool, it's eight dollars a month increase. If they attend the three-day Kinder Kid Program, it's a twelve-dollar-a-month increase.
You know, as someone who benefited from the learning ladder with my son, I will say that the fees were very low in comparison to many other private daycare providers, which, you know, was, was great. It's all relative, of course, right? It's, it's low for the two-parent household with, you know, two incomes, but maybe difficult for others. So I wanted to say that there was always the opportunity at Learning Ladder for us to offer, I wouldn't say scholarships, but some type of financial, like, reduction for the, for the investment there. So I do commend that. And, and now that there is, you know, been an expressed need and now the world's opening up again, I wonder if we're going to have an increased need over at Discovery. Just want to be cognizant of those families who would probably need that, you know, extra assistance.
Certainly.
Some support. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Connie, just wanted to quickly ask, are there any, are any of these preschool, I call them slots, but, you know, are they, are any of them subsidized from a state subsidy?
If the family qualifies for a subsidy, of course, then yes, we, we would accept the subsidy for that, that child or that space. I don't have statistics on how many of our children might be getting a subsidy right now, but we would accept subsidy.
That's good to know. I think that helps. Unfortunately, the, you know, you know, I know there was a push in the legislature to increase the rates, reimbursement, we didn't get that. So that does have a negative impact on, on childcare system overall in that it is very expensive to run a childcare operation and try to pay decent wages for those that are the early educators of our children, find it really unfair for them who, you know, who are doing such incredible work, you know, taking care of our youngest learners and not getting compensated. Not that I'm saying that we should be doing that, but at the state level, I think they should be doing more to contribute to that. I think this is equivalent for me, you know, as far as any education, starting the youngest to help our kids have a thriving start once they go into the K through twelve, you know, system. So just appreciate and commend all the work you do. I remember my little grandson who went into one of the programs and was diagnosed with the condition and was given speech therapy on-site. So the accommodations that were provided for him to be able to help in his, in his rehabilitation and support was commendable. So I just want to, you know, thank you for all that you're doing here in providing support for our early learning, you know, system. So.
Thank you for speaking about our programs. Thank you.
Mayor, I just have one question.
Thank you.
I've always been a strong supporter of preschool even before I got on the school board. I just have one question. How many children are in Discovery currently?
We're serving about fifty-six at this time, fifty-six families.
Are there any open slots?
We are coming up for fall, our youngest age group, which is kind of something we're seeing maybe as a result of COVID. We have less sign-ups for the very young, the two-years-nine months up to three-point-five years. Our sign-ups are a little lower. So if you drive by Discovery, you're going to see a huge banner out front. You're going to be seeing us push it on social media and letting everyone know that we've got slots for tiny tots. So, and then I'm pretty sure those are going to fill really fast once we really get the word out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open up for public comment. Are there any?
We have no comments on this item.
Close the public comment, bring it back. Go ahead, councilmember Early.
I, I just want to, as someone who's benefited from being able to have subsidies for childcare, I can tell you how important they are for being able to, as a parent, invest in your job training and education. So, thank you, it's really important. I, it's a very, very quick question. This is full-day care, right?
No, this is license-exempt due to the facility. It's not a facility that we can license. So this is preschool, so these are children attending less-than-licensed care per day under a four-hour per-day threshold. So generally, their classes are two and a half hours, which you can think at a two-years-nine months is probably a pretty appropriate start for preschool. And I did fail to mention too, though, that this program is heavily subsidized. Like while these fees are charged historically up for West SAC and Measure, Measure E?
E.
Measure E have heavily subsidized and supported these programs. So they are, the, the rates that are being charged are being subsidized and will continue to be subsidized by the city.
Thank you. Accept a motion to approve this item?
The move. Seconded.
Mayor Protemorosco moved and councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is our regular agenda, item number twenty-three under Finance, fiscal year 2223. Midterm Budget Workshop, consideration of Resolution 22-64, adopting a spending plan and related appropriations. For American Rescue Plan Funds, consideration of Resolution 22-106 and consideration of Resolution 22-97, adopting midterm amendments to the operations and maintenance and capital improvement program budgets for fiscal year 2223. And Ms. Roberta Ripper. Thank you.
All right. It's been a while since I've been in here. I just want to make sure I know how to move this thing. I'm going to do what happened earlier. Oh, it goes that way. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's fabulous to be in front of you in person today, see all your smiling faces. Takes a little getting used to after being able to sit in front of your computer with all the information at your fingertips. So tonight, I'm here to present the midterm budget. The city adopts a biennial two-year budget in odd-numbered years. The biennial budget was adopted in June 2021. Mid-year budget adjustments were adopted in December 2021. And then the mid-year budget, or the midterm budget review takes place prior to the start of the new fiscal year in the second year of the budget. So the mid-year budget accounts for things that were not anticipated or known at the time of the budget adoption, accounts for updated revenue projections, changes in expenditure costs due to inflation and other factors. And it also accounts for changes to the capital improvement program. And since the budget was already adopted, the midterm review often results in few proposed changes, just to, to account for changes in circumstances from what was predicted during the, the budget adoption process. So for the agendas today, we're going to do an update for General Fund, going over kind of where we ended the last fiscal year or where we're projecting to end the last fiscal year. We've got an American Rescue Plan, Spending Plan that's proposed before you tonight. We'll be looking at the, the mid-year budget proposals, provide an update on the General Fund, and then, and then go over the, the recommended actions. You have a, a big packet that has all of the details in front of you. I know you've all read through it. Each of the items that are requested in there provides some background, talks about what it is that they're requesting, what's the justification, why it's needed, how it'll be funded, alternatives that were considered and any consequences of not funding. And so all of that information is in your packet. I'm not going to go into detail on that tonight. But we will run through the, the requests and if you have questions, stop me at any time. We've got all of our department heads here that are, and staff from the departments that are ready to jump in and answer any questions on their specific items. So. To get started, here's our General Fund update. So the adjusted budget for fiscal year 2122, that's the fiscal year that just ended on June 30th, anticipated operating revenues of sixty-seven-point-seven million to fund operating expenses of sixty-seven-point-nine million. So there was a budgeted use of fund balance of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the year. The council adopted one-time appropriations of six-point-eight million. That included about four-point-one million for CIP projects, one-point-two million contribution to the debt service reserve related to the River City Stadium debt obligations, and about seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand contribution to the general reserve to maintain the council-adopted seventeen percent policy level for reserve funding. Overall, the, the budgeted use of fund balance was expected to be about six-point-nine million, leaving about three-point-three-five million available in the general fund balance at the end of the year. Revenues are projected to total sixty-nine-point-four million this year, so about one-point-seven million over the adopted revenue budget. This is primarily due to housing market activity over the past year or two, which has resulted in higher-than-budgeted property tax revenues and increased sales tax revenues, which are expected based on the increased fuel prices and inflation that we've been seeing. We did budget pretty conservatively, if you recall, back in the beginning of the fiscal year. Not quite sure exactly how revenues would recover after, you know, businesses reopened and, and things got kind of back to normal. And those increases were offset with reductions in other areas. So the one-point-seven million is a, is a net increase in, in revenues projected for the year. The expenses for the general fund are projected at sixty-seven-point-five million. It's a savings of about four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand from the adopted budget, resulting in a total use of fund balance of four-point-nine million dollars for the year. The ending general fund balance is projected to be five-point-three million, so nearly two million more than what we anticipated when the budget was adopted in June of 2021. It's important to note, at this point, there are, the savings, the four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand in savings is primarily in the, in the labor line items from vacant positions. We've projected most other line items that we would spend all of the, all of those funds. There are some savings in the OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Line Item Contribution, and in the Pension Line Item. Total savings in those two line items are about a million and a half. We have an annual contribution that we're required to make to our OPEB trust to fund, there's an actuarial, actuarial report that's done every year that figures out what's the amount that you need to contribute to make sure that you have the money there when it's going to be drawn on to pay for retiree health benefits. We are actually a hundred-and-three percent funded in our OPEB trust. So, which is fantastic. But what that means is there's about two-hundred thousand dollars in savings in that line item, a contribution that we don't have to make to that trust. There's also a little over a million in savings in the Pension Line Item, basically for vacant positions and, and savings from paying our unfunded accrued liability payment at the beginning of the year. We save interest three percent per month by paying that in the beginning of the year. We plan to contribute those savings to the pension trust that the council had approved, opening in 2017. We have not made any contributions yet to that, and so since we had budgeted funds that are saved this year, we, we had proposed to go ahead and contribute those to the fund. I don't know if you have seen, but CalPERS released their interim investment loss estimates, which show that they estimate losing about six percent for the year, which I believe equates to about twenty-nine billion dollars for CalPERS. And since they assume about six or seven percent increase in investment earnings, this is kind of going the other way. So what, what happens with that is it's going to have a significant impact on our PERS rates for fiscal year 2324. I haven't calculated those yet. But depositing the budget savings into the trust now will help us to stabilize impacts to our budget in future years, especially related to those negative investment earnings. And to put that into perspective, the projected increase in PERS costs for the general fund are about a million dollars per year, based on about twenty years of historical trends. So that is the general fund. Any questions on where we ended with that before I jump into midterm things? Okay, we're going to jump right in. Okay, so we are with our mid-year budget requests here. This table is a summary of the midterm budget adjustments by category. So the midterm budget requests across all funds total just under nineteen million. That's net of expected increased, increases in revenues. And about eleven-point-eight million of that is the proposed spending plan for, for the American Rescue Plan Funds and just under a million dollars in net revenue increase. And so this chart shows the total request by type. There is a visual representation in this chart here. Overall, we've got revenue adjustments, as I said, just under a million dollars. About nine-hundred-and-seventeen thousand of that is increased revenues expected in the general fund for the fiscal year. We're also proposing to eliminate the transfer of tax increment revenues from the Measure G Fund to the EIFD Fund for fiscal year 2122, 2223, and forward until the council adopts the EIFD budget policy. These revenues are not colored EIFD revenues until they're transferred and deposited into the EIFD Fund, but once they are deposited there, you can't spend them until we have an adopted budget policy. The council has already appropriated EIFD funds toward a couple of large, regionally significant projects, including the Ice Street Bridge and the deck conversion projects. And those funds aren't anticipated to be spent until after the EIFD budget policy is adopted, just given the long-term nature of those projects. The council's also appropriated a million dollars in EIFD funds towards the North Riverwalk Trail Extension Project, which is currently underway. Since EIFD revenues may not be spent quite yet, there is a proposal in the midterm budget to replace that with Measure G funds. But in order to do that, we need to, to not transfer those money, those funds into the EIFD Fund. So as soon as the council adopts the EIFD budget policy, then the, we would continue or restart doing those transfers. The EIFD revenues are budgeted this year at three-point-one million. The most recent projections expect total tax increment Measure G revenues of about six-point-two million, so it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars less than what was budgeted. That's the reduction that you see on this chart. All right, this chart shows the American Rescue Plan, Spending Plan or the Proposed Spending Plan?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Actually, I just have one question. The EIFD revenues, that's bricks and mortar. They're not used for operational costs?
EIFD revenues, I'm, I'm going to push that over to the city manager. He was very instrumental in putting that together and I don't want him to speak.
That's gracious. Thanks. Generally speaking, EIFD is intended for infrastructure. So anything that's colored EIFD revenue, once it's, once it's actually considered, EIFD funds, it, it is limited to be spent on infrastructure. The other, the main purpose of that district and that pool, however, is issuing bonds for infrastructure. So part of the reason we're recommending the approach we're doing is So part of the reason we're recommending the approach we're doing is until we issue bonds for the EIFD, it doesn't exactly matter whether it's EIFD or Measure G funding. We're using either way on infrastructure. But when we do issue bonds, then it has to be EIFD, and you can't go back and forth.
Yeah, I do. Nothing can be used on operation?
Not once it's colored EIFD funding, but the Measure G funds, which are still, it's still tax increment funding, it's like growth and property tax. We do budget quite a bit of that funding for different city operations that support infrastructure projects and economic development and affordable housing.
Understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
No? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. So on the screen here, and in one of the attachments to your packet there, is the American Rescue Plan spending proposal. The American Rescue Plan funds are funds received from the federal government in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. They were money identified to go to all, you know, city and county and state agencies to help provide some funds to deal with the revenue losses that were experienced, in some cases, pretty significantly, and also for the additional expenditures in fighting the pandemic and responding to the pandemic. So the city received $11,773,300 in two tranches. We received our first, the first half of that was May 2021. The second half was received in May 2022, so we have the money in hand. The funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. When we were before you in December, there were some, we had hoped to be able to bring forward a spending plan then, but we didn't have final guidance from the treasurer, from the U.S. Treasury. They issued their final guidance in January, which allows all agencies to spend up to $10 million of their ARP money for general government uses, regardless of any revenue loss experienced. So for the city, we did lose general fund revenue, but the way the guidance requires the revenue loss to be calculated, the calculation resulted in zero. We had a new tax measure, Measure N, that started bringing in revenues in that year, which offset any revenues in the general, revenue loss in the general fund. We also actually received a lot of development impact fees for some developments that were moving forward, including the Caustor's building that was under construction. And those, even though they can't be used for general fund-type things, resulted in us not having a revenue loss calculation, basically. So we waited until the U.S. Treasury issued their final guidance to come forward with a spending plan for your consideration. In December, we did fund a couple of CIP projects that we needed to move forward at that time with general facilities fund dollars, even though there wasn't enough money sitting in that fund to fund those projects. We did that, assuming that the U.S. Treasury would issue final guidance that would allow us to fund those projects with ARP funds. So in this midterm budget, you'll see that there are a couple of projects that we're reducing funding that was provided in December and funding them with ARP funds as we had anticipated doing. About $2.6 million, 22% of our total allocation, is anticipated to be spent on a project Home Key Phase II-type project. County ARP funds have also been dedicated to this project, so this is the city's portion of that project. $8.6 million is proposed to be spent on infrastructure projects, including improvements at the fire and police stations, the courtyard Phase II project, and a very important one here, City Hall HVAC replacement. We had a catastrophic failure of our HVAC units a couple of weeks ago. And these funds are perfect for that because there's some improvements to air circulation and other things that can help prevent the spread of COVID-19 that will be included there. And then a portion of it, just under 1.3 million, is proposed for the Bright Park ADA improvements. And I noticed I have a misspelling up there. Nothing like looking at it in front of a large audience to notice that. We're also proposing about 450,000 to be used for subawards to a couple of local nonprofits, for a mobile food market and a welcome baby program. Those requests, the details of those and how that money will be spent is included in attachment 2A to your packets. There is another request included in your packet in 2A. It's Rock the Block. It is also included in this budget, but it's not proposed to be funded using ARP funds, primarily because the funds would be spent after the end date of ARP funds when they can be spent. And we have an appropriate internal funding source, Measure N, that can be used for them.
Oh, yes. We have one quick question. Councilmember Early?
I was unsure if you were going to move slides, so I wanted to catch you. So when we had the opportunity to go to Washington, D.C., we talked about ARPA funding in some of our community meetings. And one of the things that was raised, a concern, was cities that had not actually spent their ARPA funds yet. And a real concern that even if they were allocated, that there was a very good chance that if, at the federal level, there were some changes made in regarding who was in power, that those dollars could be taken back, even if they were allocated. And so for me, I am a little concerned when I hear things like that, and curious about how quickly. I know that once, if we approve this, that these funds will be allocated, but how quickly will we actually spend them?
Sure. So one of the reasons I wanted to have this resolution approved tonight is that in our very next reporting, which is due by the end of this month, we would show that the funds are obligated. The way we chose the projects, too, was to make sure that we were choosing projects that we're going to spend the funds relatively quickly. The Police Department Improvements Project, for example, is ready to be contracted now. They're waiting to get this allocation to move that contract forward, and it'll move fairly quickly. The HVAC replacement project, as I mentioned, is underway already. I mean, that's something that we hope to get in within the next 12 to 18 months, hopefully. And the Bright Park ADA improvements, we also have a statutory deadline to go ahead and implement those, so we know those funds will be spent in the next couple of years as well. Most of these funds, most of these projects are things that are ready to go, that are going to move fairly quickly, and we chose them for that reason.
And just to make sure, by fairly quickly, so I heard a lot of, we will spend much of these funds, let's say, in the next fiscal year, give or take?
We will have contracts in place that obligate those even further than a budget would, which is how the federal government considers them obligated. I would say within the next few months for most of these.
Can you, because I had these questions when I was in D.C. as well. Can you tell me the difference between obligated and spent?
Well, and also appropriated. So the first step is to appropriate or budget the funds. That says that the council says, hey, this is how we plan to spend the money. They're not really considered obligated at that point. When we enter into a contractual obligation to spend those funds for a particular purpose, that is when they are considered obligated or encumbered. Once the money's out the door, paid to the contractors, that is spent. And so for the deadlines, they have given us through the end of 2024 calendar year to obligate the funds. They keep coming back and saying, if you're not moving, we're going to take them. If you're not moving, we're going to take them. But they have given us till the end of 2024 to obligate or enter into contracts, encumber those funds. And then we have an additional two years from that date to actually pay the contractors and spend those funds.
So encumbered is the same thing as obligated? So I'm happy to hear that, because I actually asked that exact question. Well, once we encumber the money, right?
They're not really forthcoming with responses to that either.
No, no, well, and so I actually asked this exact question, like, oh, again, state-level budgeting. I'm like, okay, but once it's encumbered, then they can't take it, they couldn't possibly take it away. And what, some of the concern that I heard was, no, even if it's encumbered, even if you're under contract, there still is the possibility that you're saying no. Okay, I'm going with it.
I honestly, you know, I've been through redevelopment dissolution. I've done a lot of fighting with, in that case, it was the state. But, you know, once you have a contract, it's a lot harder for them to turn around and say they're going to take those funds when you have a contract to spend those funds, especially if the work is underway.
Perfect. Thank you.
I believe if you have a contract and nothing's happening, they may say, hey, we want to take your money, but...
So you're going to make sure everything is happening in the next year or so?
Yeah?
I see it, yes.
Ariana's gonna...
Okay, all right. Thumbs up. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Any other questions on the ARP before I move forward?
I do want to validate Councilmember Early's concerns. You know, every so often, I get an email, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, saying, do something now to spend your money, or the clawback is around the corner, you know, that is going to be inserted in some budget resolution. So I do think it's a concern, that valid one, that just getting this money spent as soon as we can.
Yeah, they definitely want to see the money spent. They don't want to see it come back. And so I know that's why there's a lot of talk about this. They were saying that before they even issued final guidance on how we could spend the money, so...
I would challenge that statement just a tiny, tiny bit. Our current structure doesn't want to see the money come back.
Right.
That's all I would say.
I could offer, I think, January 2025 is the date that we're at risk. So we'll hear the concern loud and clear. Like Berta said, the projects that were selected were not with that exact reasoning in mind, but I think it fits within that timeframe, so...
And this is something, too, I mean, these are also estimates. I mean, some of these may come in over or under, right? There might, if there's savings in one area, because we've budgeted a little bit conservatively, we'll have to come back and figure out another way to spend those funds. And so this is something that we'll be watching, too, and reporting. If it looks like one of these isn't going to move forward, then we'll come back to the council and look at it a different way to get those funds obligated and covered spent.
Thank you for bringing that up, because now I'm wondering, I see the Bright Park ADA improvements. How long is that going to take?
We do have a deadline by which those must be implemented. I believe it's 2020...
Yeah, and just to answer that with a little more detail about the process, I think your question is really important in terms of, you know, we have a plan for Bright Park. Right now, we're raising money with the aim to be able to implement the entire master plan. We, based on the ADA settlement, I believe the date Tracy would know, 2026?
2025.
2025, okay. What we're doing right now, Tracy and her team are working with a consultant, know that work is underway, to design the park to a level where we can bid out the entire thing, but we'll be back to council with a plan for phasing. So we may have to make a decision based on certain timeframes that we accelerate the ADA improvements while we are still raising money for the rest of the park. But that date is of utmost concern, both the ADA settlement and also the issue that was just brought up about risk of...
If it's going to get spent, and we don't, gone.
Right. And we, yeah, and that one, we're confident that we'll be in a place where we can bid out enough of the project, be able to spend this money, and then some in those deadlines, both the ADA settlement deadline and the potential risk of...
Okay. Moving on. All right. So getting into the other midterm proposed adjustments, these are the position-related adjustments. Overall, we're proposing an increase in the full-time employee count of 1.5. There's 90,000 in one-time costs and 96,000 in ongoing costs proposed. The .5 backfill specialist position is one that I thought I had brought forward to you previously, didn't do it. We've had a half a position allocated for a while now, and we haven't been able to fill that. So this is an impact to the water fund, looking to upgrade that to a one full-time position so we can finally fill it. And then there is a request for one new water meter position. The position will ultimately fund itself through the increased revenues from keeping up on meter replacements, fixes, things like that, so that we can bill appropriately. But it's going to take a couple of years to get those fixed and get those revenues rolling in so that the position pays for itself. That's why we have it under the one-time item. There also is a request to upgrade the budget manager to a finance manager position. In the current year, there is no budget impact. However, it's about $10,000 difference in a normal year ongoing. And the goal is, we've done several recruitments, as much as I love being here with y'all, this is something that I would also love to hand over to a budget manager, and we've been unable to fill that. So we're hoping that this change might help us get that filled. And then there's requests to reallocate a handful of public works positions based on the work performed. So this is really an impact between the water and sewer funds, where we're aligning their budget with the work they're actually doing. And then there is a request for some extra help park maintenance, a little over $50,000 in Measure K, to help with a lot of the increased costs related to maintaining parks, maintain some of the smaller parks, and the increased costs related to Senate bill impact. This page shows the non-discretionary adjustments. These are called non-discretionary because the council's basically already agreed to them. We just need to adjust the budget to be able to appropriately fund them, including increase in our insurance premiums and correcting a debt payment for a fire apparatus that was purchased a couple of years ago. This is where my notes end, so now we're going to wing it. So this is midterm supplemental O&M requests. As I mentioned, and I'll go on, the next couple of pages are actually going to show what each of these requests are, but I mentioned that there's a lot of detail in your packet. So I'm not going to go through them in detail, but we are, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to bring folks up and provide additional information. But for the midterm supplemental O&M requests, 1.8 million in one-time funds across several different funds, 800,000 ongoing. The biggest impact here is for the enterprise funds. It's really the refuse fund. We are in the middle of doing a rate study, so we have not implemented rate increases for water, sewer, and refuse this year. However, we have a contract with Waste Management that does have an increase included, and so we have to pay that, even though we're not passing that on to our customers at this time. And so that appropriation is to account for that obligation. So here, I've listed by fund a lot of the, all of the requests here. For the most part, these are all one-time requests, with the exception of the ones that are noted as ongoing. Fire operations over time, some police department post-mandated training, those types of things. I mentioned that anything that didn't really need to move forward now is impelled off to the next biennial budget until we know more about our budget and where our revenues will end up. Yep.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to note and thank you for some of the space I see around the modern noise thresholds and some of that. I've heard a lot from the Southport community on this, and so I know that it's something that they have been wanting for a couple of years now. And so I will say, on behalf of my Southport neighbors, thank you for hearing them.
Don't thank me. We thank Andrea and the other folks who added in the budget. Yes, hear you loud and clear. All right.
I do have a question coming back on the modern noise thresholds for the $50,000. Is there a way to recover if, say, for example, the noise threshold is exceeding, I think, a certain percentage of what is permissible? Is there a way to recover from a code enforcement action, a fine for that revenue source, for that, sorry, for that expense?
Try to take that. I think the answer is perhaps there will be. When you adopt a standard that, you know, property owners are required to meet, we do have the ability, Tracy can help me here, to issue fines if there's non-compliance or code violations. So this, I want to be clear, though, this funding that we're requesting tonight is to update our noise ordinance to kind of introduce a new idea. Right now, our noise ordinance speaks more to nuisance, in-the-moment kind of noise violations. This is more of an operating noise threshold. So we're going to be doing some research around other cities that are similarly situated to ours, where you have large industrial areas situated near residential areas. So we don't know exactly how it's going to play out, but that is the idea, that at the end of the day, we have an updated noise ordinance that gives us the ability to issue penalties for non-compliance.
The issue is, I understand it, is that our noise ordinance is geared towards evaluating development projects in the sense that it looks at a 24-hour noise average. And that makes it difficult to translate that to a moment-to-moment kind of evaluation of noise and to determine a violation of the ordinance in that context. And so I think part of this is also to address that forthcoming, so that we are in a better position to be able to say business and rest. This is what the maximum noise allowed at any given time from this location is. Very simplified version, because the noise people tell me, that's the basic.
Okay, thank you. And the Southport Parkway landscape enhancement, what exactly does that look like?
I don't...
Do we have someone from junior element on that? I'm a little, I know it, I believe it has to do with tree planting. Tracy? Tracy is not with community development, but she knows everything, so thank you, Tracy.
Good evening. We have been working with community development to develop a landscaping plan with mature, mature plants, plants that will grow quickly, that can provide more of a noise barrier for the, your residents.
Will there be, you know, communication and engagement with, say, those that have been very interested, have been closely monitoring the plants that are there, probably haven't grown very much, to just, because I think there's some very knowledgeable residents and members of the community who can help contribute to the kind of plants, trees, shrubs, whatever, that can grow properly? Would there be an opportunity for that?
We can certainly work with community development. I'm sure they've received all of the comments from nearby residents, so we can work with them to make sure we're reaching out early and often throughout the project.
Yeah, one of the things I've tried to encourage is, is maintaining an ongoing dialogue with the neighbors that are most active. I think some of them are here tonight, so hello. It's an ongoing issue. It's important that we, we do stay engaged with both the businesses and the residents. So I think as a whole, whether it's tree planting types or other issues, the goal is to make this more of a, you know, a, a, a two-way engagement, or really three-way between the, the businesses, the residents and the city, so.
Thank you. Yes, council member early, and I know you're not community development.
Thank you, Tracy, for, for subbing in. I, I think and, and hope, and I know Erin and I have been, been working together on this to, to make sure that we, we are communicating, especially to the residents that have been most impacted by this in even regards to just making sure that they knew that we were going to be putting this on this evening. But I'm, I'm hopeful, and Tracy not talking to you, but I'm hopeful as we are moving forward on this, that engagement doesn't only look one directional, but if there are opportunities for community members, Madam Mayor, as you pointed out, to, to tag in early and, and give their feedback. I think similar to some of the things that, that actually we have done previously, the city has done previously in, in working with some of the residents, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can make sure to include them, especially since they're going to be the ones living there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next page is other funding sources. Again, I talked about the, the contribution to Habitat for Humanity under Measure N. Most of these, again, are, are one-time impacts. In fact, all of them, except for the last one, are one-time impacts. All right, fiscal sustainability strategy. So we were in front of council in November with the fiscal sustainability strategy. Part of that strategy proposed paying off some existing debt, utilizing one-time available funds to free up ongoing general fund capacity. This is, this proposal is to pay off the remaining balance of the Fire Station 45 lease revenue bonds. It's about $4.2 million. There is about seven years left on that, so the payoff would have been in 2029. So it saves us almost $600,000 annually in the general fund for the next seven years and is proposed to be funded utilizing an equal split between one-time general fund and the Measure N one-time balance, about 2.1 million from each fund. This was something that was approved in theory by council as part of that plan. There were a handful of other debt obligations that were identified, public safety leases for, for equipment and things that were identified that are not proposed at this time. Basically, we, we don't want to wipe out the entire one-time balance, and, and we've got really favorable terms in some cases, like 1% on those. So it, it didn't seem like a good financial decision. This, this page shows the midterm capital, the CIP project funding that's requested. Total requests towards CIP projects, 9.7 million and 8, 9, 11. About 12 million of that is, is other grant funding and American Rescue Plan funding. So overall, it's a, a net reduction in the city's funds toward projects. And there's a listing here of the new projects that are, that are proposed, couple of them under the water fund, a transit priority readiness plan, the HVAC replacement that we had talked about earlier, and fire station improvements, and then Alice Norman Park play equipment. There is 350,000 that is requested for the Heritage Jokes Park master plan design, and we have received significant grant funding toward that, the implementation of that project. All right, so that, that's really it for the requests. At the end of the day, we're looking at the, the general fund here. This is the ongoing balance. There is a, a adopted surplus of about, why does it say 86,000? Now I'm going to have to go back and look at this. But we've got ongoing requests in total of, of a negative, basically a positive impact, 112,000. That includes the revenue adjustments, so just over a million dollars, the O and M ongoing requests, and then there's a cost allocation set aside. So any impacts that are approved to our general support services fund, about half of those impacts hit the general fund because our general support fund is allocated out to all other funds. So for MOUs that have been recently approved, other things, and 104 requests that, 104, our general support fund requests that are included in the midterm budget, is 824,000 is the allocation of all of those out to the general fund. But at the end of the day, what, what is proposed here is that we increase the annual surplus by about $100,000. So projected surplus at the end of the year after approving all requests is 198,000. For the one-time general fund, we've got a beginning balance of about 4.7 million, total net one-time request of about 2.5 million. And so we would end the end of the year with about 2.2 million in that fund. That includes the debt payoff of 2.1 million using one-time balance. And overall, this shows what the reserves would look like if all of these items are approved for the general fund. The orange bars in the chart are what, what it was expected to be prior to the midterm adjustments. The gray bars are after the midterm adjustments. And so, as I mentioned, 2.2 million of available general fund balance. We still have 2.4 million in the budget stabilization reserve, a half a million dollars set aside in the staffing continuity reserve. And then the 17% of general fund revenues, the general reserve would be a little over 12 million. So it still leaves us about 17 million in reserve funds for the general fund. And that's pretty much it. So this is a workshop. I, I'd love to take any feedback, answer any additional questions that you might have on any of these proposed items. But we are proposing a couple of actions tonight as well, so there are three resolutions in front of you. 22-64 would approve the proposed spending plan for the ARP funds. 22-106 would direct us to, to maintain the, the tax increment funds in Measure G until an EIFD budget policy is adopted. 22-97 would approve the mid-year adjusts, or the midterm adjustments to the O and M and CIP budgets for the fiscal year. And then an additional item, which is discussed in your report, and I'm not sure I said it while I was up here, is directing the finance director to, at the end of every fiscal year, transfer the general fund surplus over into the one-time general fund. It's an accounting issue only, those rule together. It's been done that way in practice. We just haven't actually moved the funds because it requires council approval and appropriation, so.
Thank you. I have one quick question on the EIFD policy. It's been, that, that, that's been a longstanding, you know, process. And what, what is the next step? Like, when is the timeline to get that done? I think it was in the fall that I, I saw in some report that we were anticipating doing that.
I don't have the exact timeframe, but it's, it's more of just a procedural thing. It's the fact that it's not, it's not done yet, and we, we do need to adopt the budget. That's why we're recommending to make that, that adjustment between Measure G and EIFD. It's really just an accounting issue.
Yeah.
The consequence is if we don't, then it will really rush that and potentially delay projects. So that's why the recommendation is being made, but.
Right.
I know it, it is a strategic plan priority, anticipate it being this calendar year.
Okay.
But it's coming.
Okay, thank you. Council member early, no, council member will call if you have any questions. Few minor questions. I, I noticed that in a lot of the budget requests, you know, for the facilities that we have, there's replacement of track walls and stuff, and, you know, I, I can understand all that. I'm just sort of curious, though, there are allocations made for new furniture and stuff. How often do we change furniture in facilities?
We don't have a set plan. Typically, we wait until there's holes in the carpet, the chairs are falling apart, and things don't work anymore before we replace them. And I'm sorry, no, that's. So we are trying to fix that, but we don't have a, a set plan for replacing furniture necessarily.
Because there were allocations made, I was just curious. I know, I know you're prudent, I was just asking.
Yeah, well, and I don't know if you're talking about a specific project in there. I know, for, for example, the police department improvements, they've outgrown their space. There, there are a lot of things just not working. It's, it's not really working for their staff. And so a lot of these are, are looking at ways to fit more folks in and upgrade their working conditions so that they can, can kind of keep providing the good service that they're providing.
And if, if I could jump in, in all seriousness, this is one of my main priorities as managers, to really be more transparent and more realistic about how we maintain our facilities, our city facilities. We're not a new city anymore, but we have, we have the idea sometimes, like this building, for example, is, is being new. But in reality, we haven't, I believe, placed any furniture in City Hall from the time it's been open. That's just, I don't know if that's actually what you're referring to, but I think as a whole, whether it's the police department, this building, or other city facilities, we need to be realistic with, with council and with our budget. And part of that is also we're developing a, a master plan that's, I know it's in process for our vehicles, our buildings, our equipment, so that we can do a better job of budgeting long-term for, for replacement.
I also want to add, you know, doing quite a few tours among the fire departments and in the police station, my observation, it looked like it was from Adam 12, you know, dating back, just the, the way everything looked inside, in both. And I think just, you know, speaking with personnel, I think it's important for personnel who are, are first responders and doing some really challenging work out in the community to have office space that is going to help accommodate getting the other part of their work done, whether it be training or writing reports or sometimes, you know, working with our constituents in the community. Also, in my experience with COVID, seeing that, they're practically sitting on top of each other, and spread of COVID happens a lot faster. And so the, the need for some of, some of the expansion, it's not just to aesthetic appearance to make it look prettier. It really is for public health and safety, which is why the use of our funding is credible here in that it helps to mitigate the spread of COVID among our first responders. So I, I'm very supportive of that and appreciate that our, our chiefs and department heads have made these requests, you know, taking into consideration our personnel and their health and safety as they're doing the work here. And so I know they've been, some of them, you know, here in the City Hall have been able to work remotely, but, you know, are being asked to return, and we want to make sure that they are accommodated and glad that the HVAC is providing cleaner air, and same with all other, you know, locations throughout the city where our personnel are located, that they have clean air. And, you know, that's what I would request if I was asked to go back to work, that I have what it takes so that I'm safe at work, given where we're at today. If I may, Mayor, and, and I totally agree with that. I guess my question was, we've seen some cities be extravagant, you know, with furnishings, and it's not something the public wants. I just wanted to reassure the public, for you, that this doesn't happen often. We don't, we don't change it every six years. You know, we're more the old Governor Jerry Brown that used to have them mend the carpets, you know, in the governor's office.
You can see some of that, if you want to come up to the third floor. I'd be happy to give you a, a tour here. But in addition to some of those, the furniture and cubicles, a lot of that is, our, our staffing numbers have grown, and yet our space has not. And so, so we've been putting pieces together to give them a place to sit, but it's not really an appropriate desk or cubicle. The connections to, connect to Wi-Fi, to the city network, there, there are, you know, maybe 20% of what there need to be to be able to serve, you know, the size of the police force that we have, for example. So, so it's not all furniture. We're not going out and buying the, the biggest and best, but there are improvements that are, that are necessary to serve the growing staff and give them the tools they need to do their job.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Patazka Rosco?
Thank you. I want to echo the mayor's comments. A police department has been really, really long overdue, and it's really good to see that we've made this appropriation. So I'm actually surprised it's not more, because I know that there's a lot of need there. But, I mean, thank you for being attentive and conservative. I want to make a comment about the, the reserve. That's one of those things that ever since before I joined this council, has been a priority, is to keep a very healthy reserve. And right now, I see that it, the general reserve is at 17%, which is where we were aiming, which is great, thank you. And then to see the budget stabilization also at a healthy 2.3 million. I mean, what you'd said in, in our discussions prior to tonight's meeting, which, you know, were very illuminating, you know, with the recession, a potential recession pending and, you know, unknown still that are related to COVID impacts, as well as the fact that we, you know, you referenced the loss to CalPERS at 6%. That's $60 billion. I mean, for the very first time, you see stocks and bonds heading in the same direction at minus 14 and 15% or, or 13 and 14%, which is just a dismal outlook for our financial markets. It really does become an imperative for us to protect ourselves. And I know other cities are going into bankruptcy. Others are worried about laying off staff and, and cutting services to their people. This is something that I've always felt very, very strongly about being conservative and making sure that we have that fund, so above everything else. Because, you know, this multi-year downturn could be incredibly, you know, costly to states and school systems and little towns like us. And I would hate to squeeze that money from, from our taxpayers and, and workers and services. So with that, thank you for, for our reserves and keeping that protected. I want to mention that the ARP funds that are being dedicated to the new programs, well, I guess one of them's new, brand new, the other one we've had, you know, that, that is contingent, that, that's a one-time fund, correct, ARPs? And, and so what I, what I worry about here is creating an entitlement program. Very, very important investment, but at the same time, when those money, those one-time funds run out, then what? Are we, are we going to be cutting programs to our residents? I don't, I don't like that perception. So I want to make it very clear that we are excited about, you know, involving ourselves in these programs, but this doesn't mean an ultimate, long-term commitment from the general fund that should be dedicated to, say, you know, salary increases or whatever it is that we're, we're looking to prioritize. The other thing is, I, I saw that you, you'd referenced the programs that were being used for, for ARP. I had asked the question of, well, how come Rock the Block wasn't included in that? But I understand now, because of the, the timeframe, that it needs to be spent with Rock the Block being over a, a longer time period. It is appropriately situated with Measure N. When we authored Measure, Measure N, the, the priorities were to be for public safety, inclusive economic development and other, and community improvements. And since then, we have dedicated the funding toward certain park improvements and things of the sort. But when it comes to Rock the Block, that seems absolutely appropriately situated for Measure N fund. About a year and a half ago, I was grateful to partner or to have the discussion with a good friend of mine who happens to work with Habitat for Humanity and saw some of the wonderful programming they had in, in Sacramento and specifically in Oak Park, and thought it would be, we both thought it would be fantastic to bring it to West Sacramento and specifically to the Brighton-Broderick community, specifically because of what we heard today. You know, the investments are, they fall short, unfortunately, in certain parts of the community, whether that be for, you know, lack of impact fees or, or other reasons. This is an opportunity for us to reinvest in the North Side and to engage people like the Broderick Neighborhood Association and BB Can and other interested folks in our community to, to give back and to volunteer and to give improvements, bring improvements to the complexion of, of an older and sometimes, you know, sadly neglected area. And with that, you know, it's a modest investment of 50, 50,000 over the next five years from our council. our council. But I also know that Wells Fargo has also dedicated and become a partner of $75,000 to help with this, as well as other partners. Just wanted to put that pitch out there because I know that in discussions about bringing this program to our city, the first year is normally dedicated to building relationships, but this year, Rock the Block and Habitat is going to be a little bit more bold. And part of the reason is, I made the representation that we do things differently in West Sacramento. We don't have to wait and pow-wow things. If we want to get something done, we got people who are interested in the city to help get it done, including the people that are sitting on this council. If we need, we're not going to sit back and do, you know, a community building pow-wow when we can actually bring the progress to, you know, a handful of homeowners that occupy their residences and improve the complexion, whether that be, you know, painting their homes or drought-tolerant landscaping or fence repairs, yada, yada. There's wonderful things we can do. And I know that Shannon Stein from Habitat is here to answer any questions for our council as well. But I think that this, this budget in general is, I mean, it's obviously the mid-year, so it doesn't tackle all of the things that we normally do when we tackle a budget, but it tackles the right things and I think it's conservative. I think that we get to have some really cool investments while at the same time remediating some longstanding issues that we could have, we probably ought to have invested in previously. So thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, Roberta, and I look forward to supporting the budget.
Thank you. I want to mention one thing as it relates to the reserves. I know that's always something that people look at and say, hey, you've got money there. Why aren't you spending it on things where it needs to be spent? That is one of the areas that especially when you're looking at a, at a potential downturn, when we see, you know, West Sacramento is very lucky to have a very high percentage of the property tax revenue allocation for the county, those types of things. But what that also means for us is that when we see a downturn in the market, when we see these types of changes, we're hit more, right? There's a bigger hit to our general fund. And so that, that level of reserves, which the council's made really prudent decisions to set that policy level and, and fund the reserves to that level. What they do is they buy the council a little bit of time when you have a bad recession or something that comes in to make really good decisions. So you don't have to turn around and lay off people or make, you know, quick decisions to respond. That might not be the best for the community and for the city. So I would actually thank you for making some really good decisions as it relates to maintaining some reserves that help our fiscal stability.
If there are no other questions at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Our first speaker is Rachel Pope. Skylar Blalock?
Good evening, everyone. Holy moly, it's been a long evening. Sorry, it's my first in-person, so you really get a full, full feel for the, the operation when you're sitting in the chair. I'll get straight to it. Basically, the two financial items on the list from 23 were the landscaping, which was discussed previously, and then the noise violations. So I'd like to start off positively. So Mayor Guerrero, councilperson early, thank you for hearing us. You're just the two folks I've talked to directly, so I haven't met the other two you directly, but it's been a long, long-going issue for us. And to be fair, we felt like we've been stuck in a non-admittance of an issue, so no action is being taken because it wasn't being admitted that there is an issue to even look into. So this is a very big step for myself, although I know several other people in the large group that surrounds the whole area that it's being identified, especially it's an agenda item, which we asked for a long time ago, but we got enough information to get it there. So really happy about the $50,000, both twofold for identifying, doing the sound study, which is really helpful. We have a city identified baseline and target, as well as more importantly, the enforcement of the violations. Because from my personal standpoint, when it comes to a business, they're making a financial decision when it comes to their actions. And upsetting people is not really high on their priority if it doesn't affect their bottom line. So any sort of reaction to violation needs to escalate to a point where it becomes a financial downfall to not adhere to the lines as opposed to just taking that into their annual cost of operating their business. So I really suggest and hope we have an escalating impact to that cause that will ultimately deter them from having that action. I'd also like to bring up, this is a symptom of a, of a pre-existing decision. So putting or planning a city that has literally across the street from single-family homes, 40-foot tall, several hundred square foot, 25 to 50 bay diesel truck facilities was just a bad idea. We knew this plan, this issue is going to occur. It just matter how much pain it's going to cause when it happens. So I hope this experience, at the very least, impacts everyone, both from the city manager's office as well as the council going forward, that they should consider these sorts of things before going forward and extrapolating this issue to a much larger area. So we can go from where we are now, do the best we can to make everyone happy, both business and residents, and take in consideration these issues in the future so nobody else suffers the same impact their living experience. Dave, eight seconds. Thanks.
Wendy Matuka?
I'm here to speak in support of funding the landscaping on Southport and the noise study for the Patwin Park and Linden Loop areas. These items have been long in the making and I really want to thank the council and the staff for getting this on the agenda tonight. We live in the area, right where the Southport Industrial Park meets the residential homes and it's an area where there are, it's a boundary of incompatible uses. And normally in jurisdictions, when that occurs, extra attention is paid to try to harmonize those incompatibilities. And that didn't really happen with, with this area. And so this is a great first step to, to improving this for the residents. And with respect to the noise study, I would also want to suggest that residents from the Patwin Park neighborhood and the Linden Loop area be included in the scoping and perhaps a design of that study because they know the most about what the noises are, when they occur, how frequently, what is, what is bothersome. And so in terms of just trying to identify how we can even quantify what that is, I think including them in, in the design of that study would be very useful. But in some, I just applaud you guys for having this and the staff for, for having this on the agenda tonight and thank you very much.
Jeremiah Honer?
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm here, Jeremiah Honer. I'm here to represent Southport Neighbors for Peaceful Living, like the other speakers that are speaking on behalf of the noise study. We have interacted with you guys and corresponded with you on several occasions and I want to thank you first of all for your, for your responsiveness and for engaging with us and for hearing our concerns. We are enthusiastic about the noise study that is on this budget and want to submit our encouragement and our endorsement to have this done. We think it's really important. It's been needed for quite some time. We are actually expecting potentially more noise. There are two buildings that have recently been erected that have not begun business operations. And there's a third development that has broken ground without a foundation, but forthcoming. And that is going to be one of the largest, closest buildings to us that we, that we'll have experienced. So we're very concerned about that. And when the noise study occurs, we're hoping to incorporate data from those new operations as well. I do want to put, we do want to put in our request to be involved in the noise study and the noise design in one way and to have that transparency for several reasons. One thing is we just want to make, we are familiar with the area. We're familiar with when the noise is occurring. And to be frank and blunt, for various reasons, we've lost some faith in what the city has done in some occasions as far as serving the residents' best interests. There have been several missteps with the planning department, including removing trees from, that belonged there that are served as a buffer and a barrier, removing sidewalks, inadequate coverage of trash bins that resulted in litter in the pond. These are all considered takeaways. There was even a time, a point in time in which we were interacting with the city about the noise performance standards and the department that we interacted with wasn't even aware of what the noise performance standards were. And it took a while to dig those up, let alone actually enforce anything. So that was cause for concern for us. So, and to tie into a comment by the city manager and the city attorney, what the intentions of this noise study are, we also just feel like we would like to be involved with that if possible and request that we could. So we understand, because we would actually need clarification on what you mean by this is to modernize it or operation for scenarios in which businesses are operating near residents and what that entails. And I think I made a good point. I want to thank you guys. You guys have all been great and I appreciate you.
Edneh Bohannon or Bonhannon?
Hi. I am very grateful for the decision to plant trees as a screen. I have worked on this project for three and a half years. I am so delighted when I saw this, when Wendy brought it down last night, I cried. And I would also like to ask a question. When we met with the city manager in 2019, it was a very productive meeting. We agreed that a kiosk would be built at the end of Pender Court. And I know there was a staff person who was working with one of our people. And I know that came to a dead end when COVID hit. So I'd like to know when we can start that, so we can have that kiosk. And my other question is, I am a birder and I'm very concerned that the lights that are going to, going to keep increasing because of all the warehouses, that it's interfering with the migration of the birds in waterfowl in the Pacific Flyway. And what happens when birds get too much light at night? They get confused. They run into buildings, they run into each other, and they die. And I was wondering if there is a way that we can work with the city of West Sacramento? Maybe you have a policy of birds and lights. I have not found one. If you do, please direct it to me and I'd be happy to share it with other people. But I'd like to be a part of creating a safe place for birds on the Pacific Flyway as it goes through West Sacramento because the pond itself is considered a hotspot for birders in the United States. It is considered the best birding spot in Yolo County. And I think a lot of citizens don't know this. And so for us not to protect it is really doing a harm to nature and to our own well-being. So those are my two questions. One is about the kiosks. The other is about how we can do something to make sure the lighting that is established so that birds are protected. Again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I am so happy and I want to say a special thank you for Mr. Hurley. I've talked to him three or four times this year and he has been an absolute delight. So I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Verna Supozio Hall?
I could address it in a public comment.
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening, Mayor Guerrero, members of the city council. It's really great to be back in person and see everybody live. My name is Verna Supozio Hall and I'm your District One representative for the First Five Yolo Commission. I'm here tonight to thank you for the appropriating of ARP funds, did I get that right, to support the Welcome Baby program. For those who aren't aware, the Welcome Baby program is a home visitation program reaching our medical and uninsured families who just brought home a newborn. Within one week postpartum, clients will have a home visit from a nurse and then within a couple of weeks, we'll have follow-ups with two community healthcare workers. Businesses include health checks, vaccinations, helping getting the new baby on insurance, lactation consulting, even if we need to order breast pumps. And then something I think is incredibly important is mental health screenings and support. So when, my first child is now two, but I very clearly remember those first days home with a new baby, how hard it was. Those days at home are precious, but they're delicate and vulnerable times for families. They are hard and they are so isolating. Welcome Baby provides an important connection for the families in our community to know that they are not alone and support is available. The program launched in March and since then, West Sacramento residents have opted in for services more than any other area that is using the program. We've served almost 80 families in West Sacramento out of the 187 families it serves. And Dr. Early's nodding her head. She knows that she was part of the program launching when she sat on the commission as well. This is a wonderful program and now we're learning it's saving lives. And so when you sit on the dais, you don't always get to touch and feel these programs. So I want to share a story that was shared with me. During one of the new home visits, we learned that a new mom was having difficulty getting to doctor's appointments because of lack of transportation. When her home visitation nurse came by, she was able to offer lactation support, helping mom get a breast pump, helping with new insurance and assessing the baby for general health screenings. But mom noticed the, excuse me, the nurse noticed something was wrong and did a double check for jaundice. The nurse identified that the baby needed immediate care and was able to get the mom and the baby to the hospital right away. And the pediatrician who was at the hospital told the nurse, thank you for going to this patient's home. You possibly saved this baby's life. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share about this program and the great work that the First Five staff and the home visitation teams are doing. I look forward to continuing this great work together. On behalf of all the parents of little ones here in West Sacramento, thank you for your support and to care and the care for us with young children. The Welcome Baby team of First Five and our partners are grateful for the funding to ensure the third year of continuing this successful program.
Rachel Pope?
Hello, Metamare and council members. This is going back to the previous issue that a bunch of folks from this section were talking about, the warehouses and van companies and trucking, you know, big rig trucks directly adjacent to our neighborhoods and wildlife areas. And I do really appreciate that efforts are being made to address these issues and plant more trees along Southport. I would hope in the future, more might be considered to be added to the barrier between the residential area and the warehouses because it's great to have the trees along the road. We really need more trees between our houses and these giant warehouses. Also, the, the new building, some others have mentioned Metropolitan Van Company is on top of a park and we want to be able to use this park. It's got a playground for children. We want to bring our families there. That's not going to happen when we've got all these trucks making loud noise. I no longer use this park, even though it's the closest to my house, not to mention the exhaust fumes. And I think that a tree barrier, possibly a wall, a wall would, you know, a much taller wall, the wall that currently is there is only about The wall that currently is there is only about one story tall and these buildings are, I think, about four stories tall. And the noise at all hours of day. I'm a registered nurse and so I first and foremost think about the health impacts of noise, especially at night. My child's room faces these warehouses and I know it has woken her up at night. And we are not even as close as many of these neighbors who have spoken. We are farther away, but it still is really affecting us, not to mention the exhaust fumes when children are playing directly next to there. And thank you for listening to us. I feel really appreciative just to see, you know, that this is being considered and the residents of our neighborhoods' opinions are being taken into consideration. So thank you, everyone.
We have no additional requests to speak. All right, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any additional questions among the council members, questions or comments?
I do have a few comments I'd like to express. First off, the Welcome Baby program is an amazing program from what I've heard. I've heard of conditions such as the Help Syndrome, which is a potentially dangerous condition and about 25% of cases can contribute to their death. And so, you know, this is just one diagnosis among one of the Welcome Baby participants who were experiencing some postpartum conditions and was identified and treated. Early intervention is needed. And so I am really happy that our First Five Commissioner is here and also, you know, getting this program funded through the county and then being able to contribute to the third year. That's extremely important. And also for Project Home Key, just to be able to see that we are going to maintain housing for those that are in Room Key so that we don't, you know, contribute to the increase in homelessness that we are experiencing here in West Sacramento as our last pit count was higher than the last time we did, we had a pit count. And so it's really important to continue, you know, continue to do what we can to address homelessness. And also, the other Center for Land-Based Learning program, I'm really, you know, happy to see the program that's going to be addressing food insecurity for those residents in the Brighton-Broderick and those that are food insecure, contributing to making sure that we provide education and other resources so that they can find ways to increase nutritious meals among those individuals that are experiencing food insecurity. In addition to that, I'm really happy to see Rock the Block getting funded. I know that it's starting out small. Ben, I see Shannon here, I thought she was going to speak, but, so, I've been interacting with Shannon quite a bit lately and seeing what we can do to provide expansion, outreach, and partnerships. And so, you know, just getting those who are in the construction trade, we should have got that carpenter out here. I don't know who that person is. You know, I know that, yeah, you got it. Okay, good. We do, we do need to get experienced construction workers out there because it'll have expedite. And I think the revenue is, is a very conservative figure. I know we could do a lot more with a lot more money, but let's see what we can do to raise some money. And I don't know how we can partner in contributing to that. I also know that we do need to have multiple languages to do more outreach, not just for those that are needing to get the repairs done in their home, but those who want to volunteer, those who want to, you know, give back to the community. And so doing more outreach in those languages and it's not just, you know, Spanish speaking, but there's Slavic, there's Afghanistan. So there's different languages in the area that I see covered among those residents that live in that area. So just want to be able to see what we can do to expand the outreach and I'm continuing to plug away, Shannon, to find that access to those resources for you. I haven't forgotten. But I just want to say that I think it's an incredibly good program to help our residents to see that what we do care, West Sacramento, you know, leadership does care and really happy to see this program, you know, in an area of our community that, you know, we're hearing that has been overlooked for quite a few years. And I'm here to present some opportunity to show semblance of continuing to work with you. I know it's, it's very small, but, you know, we definitely have a plan to move forward. And I know that the Bright Park pool or the Bright Park ADA requirements, we do have the ADA that does need to get done first before the pool, which is why you see that funded here. And laying the groundwork to get some Bright Park improvements made, there is a sequencing. And we are definitely working hard to get additional funding. This, one of the challenges is funding. And so over the years, we've looked at trying to fund it ourselves or trying to go through the state and have learned that we don't qualify, because when you try to qualify for the state funding in the Parks Department, we have to meet a low-income threshold for the community. And because that threshold is, has got a circle, it captures other cities that, I think it's Natomas and other areas that have a higher income. And so as a result of that, Bright Park does not qualify. It's really weird. I get it. I got to change, I got to figure out how to change that law. But in the meantime, what we have done is put it on a list of federal funding requests. This is a first and appreciate, you know, the Parks and Rec Department for contributing to helping us craft these budget requests so that we can get federal and state funding that we've submitted as a near mark for West Sacramento. So we're continuing to plug away on that and I just want to say thank you to all the staff. This is not, you know, easy to put this huge budget package together. I know, I know there was quite a few meetings behind the scenes. Okay, be conservative, everybody. We can't give you everything you want. But it's, you know, it's something we greatly appreciate and making sure that all departments receive the resources they need to get their job done. And we appreciate what you do out there. I know every department, I feel like we're only giving them 20% of what they need to get the job done here in our city. And, and we just, you know, wish we could have more money. Maybe we'll win lottery or something, just to be able to fund all the, all the various needs that are needed here in West Sacramento. So with that, yes, council member Early?
I just, thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing, you sparked, sparked my brain regarding, yes, regarding Rock the Block and outreach and thinking about our two-by-twos, working with the school district. I know I've already reached out to my PTA mamas in that area, but maybe this would be something, if we're not already doing it, working with Washington Unified School District and something you could make, bring up in the two-by-twos.
All right. And I do, I do hear the request for, when we are looking at a noise ordinance, to work with our residents in establishing something that helps to bring more, as Ms. Wendy Maituka, to harmonize the two, you know, very diverse, both the business park and the residential community, to make sure that there is kind of an understanding that we need to grow and work together and live together. And so, you know, with that, I know our city manager had a response to one of the questions.
Yeah, just briefly, and I'm going to speak specifically to the sign issue. I probably can't speak intelligently to the lighting issue. That's something I'll defer to our community development staff. But yeah, a quick search of my email, March 12th, 2020, was our last exchange on, on the sign installation. So I think we know what happened after that. Appreciate you being here tonight, if Edna's still here. Thank you for bringing it up. What I will do, Tracy Michael, our Parks Director, already texted me. We'll circle back with Tracy. I do recall that RD900 is actually the underlying property owner of that area and I know they had indicated previously that there would be support for it, that the council also sits as the RD900 board. So I don't know if there'll be board action required, but, but short, long story short, we'll get, we'll get working on that sign again. Either Tracy or I or someone will reach out. Maybe we'll just go through Wendy since I have your email here and Cliff was the other person. So thanks for bringing that up. And I believe that's all. It sounds like we're wrapping up. I just want to give a big thank you to Roberta and not just her staff, but also all the department heads and other staff involved in the budget. It's always a process that looks way more simple than it really is and I just appreciate all the work. Thank you.
And I do have one quick question regarding measure and who's going to take, sorry, the noise project, who's going to take responsibility for that? Who's the lead on that?
Be the Community Development Department.
Okay, Community Development. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. And with that, if there are no other comments or questions, and I think I did close public comments, I didn't do any officially. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, Mayor Protemorosco moved. Councilmember Akala seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, this item is approved.
Thank you. Great to see y'all.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll go to our administrative function, part two. We have our council assignments. And anybody have any, any assignments they would like to discuss or bring up?
I can brief one.
Yes, if you have it.
Yeah, just briefly. Sure. On July 7th, I met with the commission, Executive Commission on Homelessness. We've received a CalWorks Davis Pacifico Pilot Proposal Presentation, a program that assists with rent bills, credit repair, and assistance to folks that have been dealing with substance abuse, mental health, being evicted, living out of their cars. It was a fantastic model, was great to hear about the project. I'd like to get more information and maybe share it with our council. We did hear, as a mayor mentioned, that our pit count, even though at the time of the meeting it wasn't yet final, it did show that West Sacramento had the highest increase in the amount of homelessness, along with woodland, while it was stated by our staff that it probably did not have to do with this, you know, West Sacramento being a magnet, but more had to do with the fact that there are services here in West Sacramento, including, and I mentioned, that oftentimes folks are getting given vouchers to stay in the motels along the corridor of West Capitol Avenue. So that might also be a part of it. But we have a packed agenda for August with the biannual Yolo County Housing Presentation Survey Results from stakeholders such as members of the council, ARP Work Group Update, Homeless Youth Report, Crisis Now presentation, and we'll be meeting on August 4th. And then the only other is regional sanitation. We met last week, we talked about the sewer fee or received a presentation on the sewer impact fee program. And I don't know if everybody's received their utility bills, but there's a little insert from regional sands, is we're not increasing our rates again, which is grant, fantastic, because this is really good financial management with our debt obligations and doing our best to make sure that the rate payers don't get these increases. It's a lot of hard work and they've done a fantastic job. So that's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So today, the Sacramento Area Council, the Government Bike Sharing Policy Committee met and we did approve recommendation to take to the board to amend the bike share technical expert agreement. So that modification is to do a little bit of an expanded study. And we also had a, we also reviewed Lime's recent Bike Share Equity Report showing that, you know, the use of Lime bikes and the other resources are increasing. And I did ask for more data on the West Sacramento side, since we are a part of the bike share, including Sacramento, and I saw a lot more Sacramento data. So I think we're going to get more information on that. If anybody's interested, this data is available. And for the League of California Cities, we have councilmember Akala who's on there, but I just wanted to just inform everybody, as I did last year, received a presidential appointment to the 2022 General Resolution Committee at the 2022 Annual Conference. And in the resolution committee, policies are presented to us for approval and recommendations to set the agenda for the League of Cities Board to take action on for the following year. So I'll be attending the League of Cities meeting and I think councilmember Akala may end up coming with me and that happens in September. And next is on the agenda is our, and any of the, no other reports? We have some council appointments that have yet to be made. We have received some additional applications, I think, that are in the pipeline for the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission. And I don't think, I don't know if there are any applications coming in for the disaster council, so maybe we can do another round of outreach to, you know, encourage people to participate in that. But if we can receive the applications that I think are, so we can make, I think we do have a recommendation, but I'm not sure everybody saw that application, because we received an email directly from the applicant. So I don't want to make that appointment.
From Matthew?
No.
Then we did not receive it?
No, she did. She said didn't. Maybe we'll ask her to send it. Okay. All right. And next is the council calendar?
That'll be me tonight, sending for Amanda. And really the only item I wanted to note, should go without mention, I know everyone's looking forward to tomorrow night, Mayor's State of the City Address, down in the Galleria, be the first time we're back in City Hall for that event. So hopefully everyone's able to attend, can jump right into the manager's report if you want.
Yes, please.
So first, I just wanted to, you know, this, this, if you just watched the meeting without knowing and didn't take note, because it was a pretty routine meeting, first meeting back, want to thank our team over there, Jennifer and Lori, for getting us ready to have this meeting, in addition to our video team in the back, Amanda and others that were involved. I think it went pretty smooth. Want to thank the council and great to see you all sitting up there for the first time as this council, I know for the first time for some of you as council members. So it was, it was great to do that. I want to take care of a procedural item also, so, you know, I'm obligated to do. So Project Home Key, everyone's aware, 817 West Capitol Avenue, the former roadway end. We've had a challenge with the need to do emergency repairs to the roof. So state public contract code allows cities to enter into no bid emergency construction contracts with delegation to a non-elected public official. Our city's municipal code delegates this authority to the purchasing agent, which in our code is defined as a city manager. So in this case, the repair has an estimated cost of about $76,000. An emergency contract is in the works and being circulated for procurement very soon. The source will be one-time Measure E funds that were utilized for the acquisition and initial improvement of the property. That's our plan for how to fund it. Once that contract has been approved, the obligation as the city manager is required to report on the contract at the next council meeting, which is what I'm doing now. And if the work is continuing, the council must adopt a resolution to allow the work to continue. So according to what Rebel told me earlier, staff is planning to bring the item to council likely at the second meeting in August to meet that, the purpose of the emergency contracting action. But tonight, this report is to cover my responsibility to report to the council as a designated purchasing agent. So just sure.
Thank you for that update.
And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And I just want to say before we adjourn, thank you to everybody for making tonight happen, to be in person. I know it was, we tried a couple of hiccups, we had a couple of hiccups to get us started to, to be here in person, but here we are.
We'll be better next.
Oh, no, no, we, no, I'm not talking about the computer stuff. That happens all the time, Jennifer. You better get used to it.
I am a consummate perfectionist.
You'll get, you'll have so many tricks under your sleeve by the time we're down here, but, you know, and, and just to welcome, you know, both, you know, both of you here, I know that's your new, and we're, and we're both learning. I knew as mayor here and learning how to make this a smooth meeting and just appreciate all that you've done to make this happen. So with that, I want to, you know, ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All right. Second. Mayor Protemorosco moved and councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemorosco?
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.